Today is November 16th. It is 7:05 PM. Welcome everyone to the planning board meeting.
Okay, the meeting will come to order. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, amended on 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting have been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding the virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines of the virtual meetings issued. The guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note all microphones for of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time, please use the raise hand button in Zoom or if on a computer or a dial star nine if on a telephone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. If at any time your question, we deem that your question will be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment section, only the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourselves before you speak at all times. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP TV. Please join me with salute to the flag. We pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzal.
Here.
Jim Henry. Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Thank you. Trudy Syfax. Absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Erica Lipo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Prizak.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
At this point, from what I can see, we have the number of public attendees, we have 32, which is way below the amount that we are capable of handling, so there are no issues there. So anybody that would wish to dial in could if they would like to. So there, so we're good there. And we are at, actually, right now, we're at 33 attendees outside of the planning board and the applicant's books. So today, the application that we're going to hear is the Asbury Beach Club. Would you like to, should we swear in the professionals?
Sure. Yes. Why don't we swear in Gary, the architect?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, sir, please raise your right hand.
Raised.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Gary Handel, G-A-R-Y-H-A-N-D-E-L.
Okay, and I'll also swear in our professionals, Doug and Jason. Please raise your right hands. You solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Doug?
I do.
Thank you. Please identify yourselves and give us your affiliation with the board.
Jason, your board engineer and conflict.
Doug Clowen, board engineer.
Thank you. Okay. Floor is yours, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you very much. It's good to be back again, everyone. When we left off last month in October, the board determined to have a conflict planner provide another planning report in this matter. That planning report did come in and it appears on the website, it looks like it's been premarked as Board Exhibit 12. That's B012. And that is a report of insight, engineering, survey, and planning dated November 10th, 2020. So this evening, we are going to recall Mr. Handel to answer some of the questions that were raised in this report dated November 10th, 2020. This is Mr. Handel's third time back before the board. He's previously been here twice before to provide testimony and has been questioned by Mr. Lieberman and by the public on both of those occasions. Today, we're not presenting new exhibits. Our exhibits have been premarked and are on the website. But we are going to answer some of the questions here just for the record. We'll note that many of these areas are areas where Mr. Handel has previously given testimony, but we want the records be clear, so we will go through the letter point by point. So with that.
If I may, we would just like to be clear, once we go through each one of these, whether you are complying or not, and if not, are you asking for a variance or a waiver of any kind?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Handel, are you there?
Yes, I am, Jennifer.
You have the best headset. You come across very clearly. So, Mr. Handel, I believe the first three comments of the planning report are largely comments, so I'd like to turn our attention to number four. And that is, there we go. This is great that it's up on the screen. So we'll start in question four A. The report asks whether the design for the beach club meets the purposes that are in the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Yes, as testified in the September hearing, we believe that the proposed design meets all of the requirements of the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Okay. Turning to four B. There's a request for testimony as to Section 60 of the waterfront redevelopment plan. And specifically in this section says, "The intention of these guidelines is to properly execute the Mediterranean Revival Arts and Crafts and Modern Styles." Can you clarify what the style of the building is?
Sure. The WRP states that the building should be in one of the three styles, Mediterranean Revival, Arts and Crafts, or Modern. The American architectural historian Richard Guy Wilson defined modern as "the eclectic coexistence of traditionalism and modernism." This building has been designed in the modern style. The modern element comes in in the form of its horizontal orientation and the rhythm of the windows, materiality and color, and is complemented with the archway and the porthole entrance. So we feel it rests squarely in the modern style.
Okay. And item C, it's asked whether the proposed design, and of course, this is the design that was submitted to the board after February of 2020. The question is whether that proposed design is consistent with the standards for building elements, which start on page 61 of the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Yeah, so after the public comment period in February 2020, we were asked to design a building that complied with all of the mandatory components of the Architectural Design Guidelines, and we believe we have done that.
All right, and then item six, item D discusses page 63 of the waterfront redevelopment plan concerning building articulation. And it indicates that overly long buildings should not, should be broken down in a scale comparable to that of buildings on the rest of the block face. No street walls should extend beyond 100 feet without a break. This can be accomplished by articulating the building in plan or elevation. Inches may be enough. I'd like to just quickly go through each of the building elevations, and you can indicate whether they comply. Oh, for self, let's, we can cut to the chase. Do each of the elevations comply with this requirement?
Yes, we believe they do.
Okay. Madam Chairwoman, would, do you want our architects to go through each face to demonstrate how they comply?
That would be, that would be good. Thank you.
Rick. Rick Kearns, if you are on and able, we may need to stop screen sharing this for a moment, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you. And Rick Kearns, who's, who works with Mr. Handel, is on here, I believe. Should be able to share his screen to pull up some of the premarked exhibits. There we go. Excellent. Okay. So I will say that this first exhibit, although it's not marked in the corner, this is part of Exhibit 59, which was a multi-page exhibit that is up on the website, and this is Sheet A4 of Exhibit 59. Now, Mr. Handel, which elevation is this?
So this is the Ocean Avenue frontage, the west elevation.
Okay, and how does this how does this elevation comply with the requirement not to have overly long?
So you can, you can see that the elevation is broken into several sections. There's the articulated section with the repeating pattern of windows and vertical piers with casement window infills in it, which is then broken up by the portion that has the archway and the porthole window. None of these sections exceeds the maximum.
Excellent. If we could go to the next exhibit. Okay. And this is the south elevation, which is marked as Exhibit A70. How long is this elevation and?
And so this elevation is, you know, so basically, so this is, has an initial recess of two feet. And then this run is approximately 22 feet long, and then the building steps out that two feet for another 49 feet, and then transitions to fence for 11 feet. So clearly, no run exceeds that 100-foot limit.
Okay. Next exhibit, please. This is the north side of the property. This is Exhibit A71. And how does this comply with the waterfront redevelopment plan?
So this has a similar two-foot recess, which extends, in this case, 21 feet. And then the fence transitions stepping out that two feet and runs for another 61 feet. So again, no portion of this building exceeds that 100-foot limit.
Okay. The next elevation?
And so you can see, this is the fence elevation, which is the rear, the rear yard. And so that has the same articulated fence that we just saw on the northern elevation. At the request of the board, the, in lieu of the planter boxes on the boardwalk, planter beds have been incorporated into the fence line, so the fence runs approximately 24 feet and then has a recess of 18 inches for a width of seven and a half feet, and then the pattern repeats. And so that pattern repeats eight times along the length of that frontage. So clearly, none of those unarticulated portions exceeds the 100-foot limit.
Okay, and for reference, you were referring to the exhibit that had already been marked as A73. Right. So returning then to the report. We just finished item D. Item E. It says here, the architects, applicant's architecture will provide testimony on the design of the building and whether it's consistent with the intent of building frontages. The building frontage is a section on page 73, or 63. So how does this application comply?
The waterfront redevelopment plan states that the frontage of a building is a primary contribution to pedestrian activity. The frontage is that elevation which faces a public street or a public open space. Frontages are sometimes called facades. Elevations to interior side and rear property lines, including those facing alleys, shall not constitute frontages. With our planning consultant, Keenan Hughes, we determine that there is one frontage based on the WRP, and that is the elevation that fronts the street and contributes to pedestrian activity, which is Ocean Avenue. The sides are easement for access to the boardwalk, and those can be interpreted as alleys. There's no building frontage along the boardwalk. The open air pool and seating area located between the building and the boardwalk is enclosed with a decorative wood privacy fence, which is permitted by the WRP.
So the app, the application as proposed complies with that provision of the WRP, correct?
We strongly believe so.
The next item is item F. And it has a question about the roof. This is, the roof of a building may be flat pitched or both. Rooftop must be designed to be seen from taller buildings existing or potential. If the roof is pitched, it shall be clad with a high-grade material. And the request is for testimony we provided that the building is consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan.
We believe again that it is. The roof of the building has been designed to be seen from above. Most of the roof is an open roof deck finished with wood or composite decking that will feature seating areas. A small elevator and mechanical bulkhead will have a roof that is six feet lower than the top of enclosure to conceal any rooftop equipment.
Okay. Item G. There's a question specifically about the windows. And it indicates that "The general characteristic of the Mediterranean Arts and Crafts and Modern Architectural vernaculars is that of mass and weight, thus showing the frontage wall thickness is integral to these vernaculars. Under no circumstances shall the windows be installed flush with the outer surface of the facade." But my question to you is, does the proposed plan comply with this, and are the windows flush with?
The window, the window, the windows are not flush, so we believe they are compliant. So they're recessed by two inches into the facade, which creates the desired feeling of building depth and the plane break, which is the intent of the WRP.
Right. Item H, it indicates that we should provide testimony regarding the intention for signage and compliance with the WRP.
The applicant has agreed to install a sign on the glass by the entry door that will reflect the name and address of the building.
Okay, and item I, there's a question about facade colors and whether they comply with the WRP. Can you address that?
Yes, again, we believe that the, the building will comply with the color requirements of WRP. The building will be white stucco with wood trim. The wood will initially be a darker shade, but will be allowed to naturally patina into a silver gray, which will fall within the color saturation of the wall. We believe these colors are permissible under the WRP guidelines for facade colors.
Okay. We believe that that's everything within the report where additional testimony was requested. And so with that, unless we are mistaken about that, that is all I had for Mr. Handel this evening.
Just, just a question here. Can you just review that last one once again? Did you mention that the color would at some point turn into? Or is it, is it when we're starting, it's the right color, or at some point it will turn into the right?
I can address, I can address that. So they, the, so the, the stucco is a, is a white stucco is one of the things that are permitted under the WRP. We're proposing teak windows, which within two years will, you know, come to a beautiful silver color, which will be complimentary to the white. If the board finds that unacceptable, we'll paint the, we'll paint the trim color. Though we thought it would be a beautiful counterpoint and in line with what is allowed under the WRP.
The WRP does allow for trim colors to be darker than the stucco color, correct?
It does.
Okay. Do we have any questions from our professionals regarding this testimony?
Space bar didn't work all of a sudden. Sorry about that. I have no further questions, and I thank the applicant for going through that. I know some of it was repeat, but I think it was important to address those points, so I'm good.
So you're, so you, so you feel that, that you're in agreement with what the testimony was, that you agree that where the applicant said that they comply, that you agree that they do comply?
I agree.
Okay. So, does the planning board have any, anyone on the planning board have any questions regarding this, what was just reviewed? The testimony? Anyone on the planning board?
John Moore.
Go for it, John.
Okay, thank you. So you classified, I believe, you said the east side would be the rear yard during part of your testimony. I'm not sure if that's correct. I read the page 63 as far as building frontages. The frontage of a building is a primary contribution to pedestrian activity. You're saying east side, the boardwalk, is not pedestrian activity or is not a public open space?
We have no building, we have no building facing onto the boardwalk. We have, you know, behind that fence is a pool and recreation area, so so the, so there's, there is no, there's no building that could have a facade there.
Maybe that's the part that I'm getting a little bit confused on. I thought like any structure has four sides, or you say there's no building side to the east side? Then what is it?
So behind the, behind the fence is, is a pool, you know, an area for seating, and then 70 feet back are some cabanas. And then in the service area, which is approximately between 11 and 12 feet back behind the fence, there's the continuation of that white, of that white stucco wall. We don't believe that that constitutes frontage. Our planning consultant, we've consulted with our planning consultant, Keenan Hughes, who could address that perhaps more fully than I could, Mr. Mayor.
We can have Mr. Hughes come up and provide further testimony next.
Okay, Mr. Handel, thank you. And I know you do excellent work and everything, so I'm not questioning that. And how you, in my opinion, made the west side so much more attractive. I was hoping we could do something with the east side. And I know you have the capability, so I was just hoping for that. Then, I don't think it's, and Ms. Smith or whoever, this had nothing to do with this testimony. So I have a question about the materials being used. Should I save that for the engineer or ask the architect now?
Materials as far as the, the building and the fence?
Correct.
Is this, Ms. Smith, this is a part of the, remember we had discussed about having some people recalled? This was one of those questions. So should we just have the question now, or should we?
That's fine with me. I'd rather, if we have any, if the board has questions, Handel, I'd like to address them while he's here.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we do that? So if you could, Mr. Mayor, feel free to ask your question.
Okay, and I had this for the last meeting, but we didn't get to it back in October. You look up and down the boardwalk, and you'll see nothing on the boardwalk made out of wood. That's because you go back to the Hurricane of 44, where the boardwalk and everything, including the piers and everything, were just totally demolished. One thing that wasn't demolished in the exact same site was the Seventh Avenue Pool, because it was made of solid material, be it a cement, stucco, bricks, same with all the pavilions. And that goes through like to the Hurricane of 92, that goes through Irene, and that goes through Superstorm Sandy. Nothing on the boardwalk made of solid materials has ever been demolished by a superstorm or hurricane, yet everything of wood has been demolished. So if we build this out of wood, aren't we just asking for trouble? Just, and we know, let alone a superstorm or a hurricane, just the normal wind and sand damage, where sometimes during the wintertime, that becomes like a, you know, almost like you're sandblasting wood. So can we change the materials to solid?
Or so the, the vast majority of the building is the solid stucco material as as outlined in the WRP. The, the trim around the windows is proposed to be teak, which is one of nature's most durable material. They build boats out of it, you know, so that it's specifically a wonderful material to resist the saline environment. We think it's beautiful. You know, the, and it's not inexpensive, but we think it adds a grace note to the, you know, to the, to the building. So we would like to keep it. Our client would very much like to move on with this project, you know, like, and so if, you know, you know, so we, we believe that, that teak is a very appropriate material to use for the trim of these, of these windows. It's been proven over the decades to be resistant to this type of environment, and we're pretty sure it will hold up.
I'm, I'm sorry, I believe, I believe that the mayor is talking about the east side finish as opposed to the west side finish?
You mean the fence?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. I'm not, I'm not questioning the trim around the windows, the teak whatsoever. I'm questioning a wooden fence, which is a couple hundred feet long, which history has proven to us, it's going to be knocked down the first good storm we have, and then, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, what that does to the interior of the club and what that does to the west wall. So again, anything just throughout the history of Asbury Park that's been wood has been replaced since the 40s, if not before then. Again, I go back to Seventh Avenue Pool, which was on the same exact site. Hurricane of 44, Storm of 92, Donna in 60, nothing, no damage. But why should we build something on the east side opposed to Mother Nature and that ocean out of wood, knowing the consequences of the past?
Sorry, you know, Mr. Mayor, I misunderstood you. I thought we were talking about the trim, so I apologize. So I believe, and I can check with, with our consultants, but I believe that by code that fence has to be a breakaway wall by CAFRA. So I don't think it's by code that it's, that, that it could be stucco. And wood fences are one of the things that are specifically allowed in the WRP. I can check the code requirements for you and get back to you, but I believe it is a code requirement. That'd be, that'd be made of breakaway construction.
Okay.
So under, under CAFRA, under the code, certain things need to be designed to resist the force of the storm, and other things need to be designed to yield to the force of the storm. And I believe that that wall is one of the things that needs to be designed to yield.
Okay, I'm just a little bit surprised with that, just because when they rebuilt some of the pavilions, the fifth pavilion and others, they're not breakaway walls, they're.
I think a building, I think a building wall needs to be designed to stay, but a fence needs to be designed to yield. I can clarify that with, with our folks and get back to you on that. I understand your, your issue and concern.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Handel.
Do any other members of the planning board have any other questions regarding this testimony?
Jen Souter, I just had a quick question about the teak windows. Just that, I think this came up in a previous meeting, but you're planning to use certified wood?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
For the rest of us, perhaps, what is certified wood?
So it's an FSC certified, so it basically means that it's been fair harvested, you know, so that it's not illegally cut. So the more resistant woods come generally from tropical climates, and you want to make sure they've been properly harvested.
Right. And any other planning board member have any other questions regarding this testimony? No? Okay, let's, we can open it up to the public for questions?
Mr. Lieberman would go first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Lieberman.
You're muted. Stuart, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
I, okay, wait, am I muted now?
No, no, you're good. You're good.
Okay, thank you. Um. Mr. Handel, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening to you. You're looking very dapper tonight.
Thank you, thank you. The, well, at least from the waist up. The fence, the fence that are big problems with the fence, just to cut to the chase. So my questions are going to be about this fence. Does the fence have footings? Is it supported by footings?
Fence is designed to, again, I don't have the details with me right now, but the fence is designed to break away according to the CAFRA requirement. So it'll have some footings, but it's not, it's not designed to resist the force of the storm.
Okay, but it does have footings, yes?
Yes.
And it's connected to the other three walls?
Say that again?
Is it connected to the other three walls of the structure?
It is, it is touching them. It is not structurally connected to the other three walls of the structure, of the structure, to the other walls of the structure. Again, it needs to break away without, without creating any damage to the, to the other, to the other structures.
All right. The, you realize that on page 63 of the of the, of the regulations concerning the waterfront development under building frontage, which is what you were giving testimony about before, there's a hierarchy of building frontages with blank walls being considered to be, there to be avoided. You, you know that? I'm, I'm sure you do. Right? You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
And effectively, there's a blank wall?
It's a fence.
It's blank?
It's a fence.
Okay. The the, the, the thing about it is it does face the front, it has a, it faces a public area, right? Face the public open area, which is the boardwalk, right?
It faces, it's a fence facing the boardwalk. Or, and then again, as mentioned, our planning consultant will testify to. Or, and then again, as mentioned, our planning consultant will testify to our understanding of why it is not a facade facing a building frontage.
Okay. You've testified in lots of landing boards and zoning boards, hundreds, yes?
Well, probably not hundreds of different zoning boards, but dozens.
And you're familiar that in land use, you can have more than one front. That happens, right?
It is.
Are you asking in other codes, Mr. Lieberman, or this code in particular?
Other codes, this code, either one. That's not an uncommon phenomenon where you have more than one front?
It could be possible.
Well, you've encountered it before I take it?
Yes, it's, it is about how frontage is specifically defined.
And would you be able to comply with the frontage requirements of these, of the waterfront development rules if you were asked?
It would, it would.
God, I think the testimony so far is that we do comply with the waterfront redevelopment.
We are, we are, we believe we are in compliance.
All right, but insofar as this being that it, that it fronts an open space and that it's what so many visitors to Asbury Park are going to see and what people who live there are going to see, would you be able to give it the designs that are in the building frontage section if you were asked?
We believe we have.
I understand that. I understand you believe you have, but what you're giving everybody is a blank fence. That's what they're getting. So when they walk past this, they just see a fence. That's it.
The fence is articulated every twenty-four feet with a seven and a half foot recess at the request of this planning board, you know, which is then, which our landscape architect can describe the planting materials that go.
Yeah, but you'd agree that the, the other side along Ocean Avenue was architecturally much, much more interesting than the area that fits, that's by the boardwalk, the fence, right?
I believe we designed a beautiful fence.
What would, okay, that's why I'm just curious, what would make this not a beautiful fence?
So, Mr. Lieberman, what is the point of your questioning, please?
Well, you said you believed you designed a beautiful.
Yes, so basically we've used, we've used, we've used cedar. You know, basically we have a, a nice pattern of overlapping boards. We've articulated it every twenty-four feet with a recess. We're planting it in between. We believe it is an appropriate solution. So I've asked and answered your question and I don't appreciate being badgered.
Oh, no, I wasn't trying to badger you. I'm sorry if you thought I was. I was just trying to understand what you meant with, I was trying to understand what would be contrary to a beautiful fence. But look, I, I'm not going to continue along with this. We believe this does not satisfy the facade requirements if we're going to ask the other witness those questions. We think that this, this building needs to be designed in a much nicer way so that people on the boardwalk have something nice to look at rather than a big fence. And we think that's a major, this really falls short in that area. There's, there's two fronts to this building. I mean, that's why this all ended up. The last time the planner was on.
You're supposed to be asking questions. You're testifying and giving me your opinion. How about finishing up with this witness and get to the planner, which is what it sounds like you want to do?
Yes, I am. I'm done, I'm done with Mr., I'm done with Mr. Handel. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for the talk. About looking back at it.
All right, so are we saying that they, that we're looking for testimony from the planner also?
We will have Mr. Hughes, he's here.
Okay, but at this point, the public has not had a chance to ask questions yet.
We're not done with this witness.
Right, so we have to finish this witness first and then go to the planner. So I, does anyone else have any questions before we go to the public? Okay, can we please open it up to the public? And if you could just let us know who you're letting in, what their name is. I see that we have a, two people that have their hands up at this point.
Okay, and I would like to make a statement to remind the public that the questions have to be related to the testimony that was given by this applicant.
And just briefly, just in case there's anyone on the line who hasn't participated before, is there a number that needs to be pushed to raise their hand?
It's a star nine.
Thank you.
Anybody that would like to, to speak, it's star nine? Or if they just put their raised hand if they are on a Zoom. At this point, I see that there are two people that would like to speak. For APTV, if you could let one of them, one person in and let us know what, which one you're choosing?
We'll go ahead and start with a phone number ending in three five zero.
Okay, so we'll bring in three five zero. Can we please have your, your name and address, please? Phone number ending three five zero.
Ernest McNally, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. The proposed project is within view of my home and I, I interact with it. So my questions are not like someone on the other side of town, but I'm directly involved. So I'll start out with asking, gentlemen, you talked about a fence on the east side. Is it a solid fence?
Yes, it is.
About how high?
It is seven foot six inches high.
Okay. A solid structure, seven feet high. Wouldn't that be more like a wall than a fence? I mean, to me, a fence, isn't a fence something that's usually a, I don't know, it's made up of planks that you could see through and keeps the dog in. But what you're talking about seems like a wall, isn't it?
Mr. McNally, you've asked Mr. Handel the question. He will be happy to reply.
The, the proposed fence meets the W R P's definition of a fence. So the yard fences for siding rear yards, it explicitly permits fences of closed wood boards, masonry, trellis, lattice, or some combination thereof.
Well, first of all, sir, I don't want to sound like I'm badgering you, but you do know when you answer questions, no one can hear you. So if I ask you to speak up, please don't think I'm badgering you, okay?
Did you hear Mr. Handel's last response or not?
No, you can't hear him. He whispers. I mean, for weeks, for weeks. I mean, I try and put a megaphone next to my phone to hear him.
Then Mr. McNally, Mr. Handel, if you'd like to repeat that in, we'll let Mr. McNally hear it.
We believe the fence complies with the requirements of W R P, which allows for fences of closed wood boards, masonry, trellis, lattice, or some combination thereof. Could you hear me?
Yes, sir. So in terms of compliance, is there a difference between compliance of a fence? Do they define a fence as seven foot tall solid? Or would that be defined in the, in the redevelopment plan as, as a wooden wall? I'm just trying to understand where you derive a seven foot solid structure, which will completely block the public and the people inside can't see the ocean. I don't know why you would do that, but assuming you want a seven point six inch
I have to object.
Structure in the front, why, why would you call it a, a fence when, I don't know, fences are usually like four foot high? I mean, is it also like a security wall?
He just answered the question based on.
Okay, but.
Wait a minute, let me finish. He just answered your question, the previous question, based on the plan and his interpretation of the plan. He answered the question.
He referred to, he believes that it's within the redevelopment plan. But he believes, when he's advocating to build this, what difference does it make when he believes? The question is.
Read from the plan. He says it's.
I'm asking the question.
Understands the plan.
The public, the public is going to be looking at a seven point.
I'm not going to argue with you, Ernest.
I'm not arguing. I'm just trying to ask the witness, not you, Mr. Serpico. How about you butt out, Mr. Serpico?
Please mute him. Thank you.
Thank you.
The point is, the question was asked and answered by the witness, okay? The question is essentially being repeated by the questioner. The man gave you an answer. Next question, we'll bring him back. Mr. McNally is not muted permanently. He's entitled to continue, go on, but he's answered that question.
At this point, should we go to the next caller?
No, not next. Hello, I'm here.
Okay.
Hello? Yes, you know what? This is like a shuffle here.
We hear you.
You really ought to be, you're nothing but a shuffleboard.
I just said to you, you have the right to ask more questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, I know. And, and then Ms. Kursak is, let's move on.
Move, she made a mistake. Go on, move on.
Thank you.
So ask your questions.
So now, sir, now we're talking, you said it's designed to be a breakaway fence, which means if, if a storm comes and the water comes over the boardwalk and charging at the structure, the fence is designed to break off and, and whatever, float away, correct?
I believe that is a code requirement.
It's a code requirement that it, that it give way. And where does it go when it gives way? It doesn't evaporate. It's breakaway. Breakaway where?
Mr. McNally, this is.
I'm asking where it goes when it breaks away.
He also has the right to interject. Go ahead.
This line of questioning was already fully pursued. This project has received a letter from the D E P indicating that it has been designed to be fully compliant with the CAFRA regulations. There's already been discussion about the fence and breakaway and how it's been designed. I don't think there's a need respectfully to go in with that line of questioning, Mr. Serpico.
Well, if I might ask you a question, if you look at the questioning of the public all along and, and when Mr. Gonzalez testified, we're questioning the whole efficacy of the whole project when you seem to want to move on in between every month, like it's all been resolved?
No.
I mean, there were, there were all kinds of issues.
You can't.
All I'm asking is, is there no, is there no indication where a seven foot fence will go? Or where's it going to go? In somebody's front yard, in the street?
It is certainly not within Mr. Handel's expertise to discuss.
Okay, all right, so he doesn't want to answer, so let's move on. So in other words, is it correct, Mr. Handel, that this seven foot solid fence, seven foot six inch fence will face east? How far from the boardwalk edge will it be?
It's pretty much on the property, on the property line.
So in other words, the fence meets the boardwalk? Is that correct?
Is that a question or a statement? I'm sorry.
The fence and the boardwalk pretty much meet. They touch?
Yes, it, it's pretty much co-planar, yes.
Okay, okay. So when, when the public walks by, would it be correct to say that they're going to see what, I don't know, I think you called it an articulated wall? What does that mean? Five feet and then it recesses, then it comes back out for five feet? Is that what you mean by articulated?
Yes.
There'd be no windows in it?
There's no windows. Typically, there are no windows in fences.
Okay, and I think you talked about motif and color. It's going to be white?
It's going to be white.
It's going to be what?
Talking about the building or the fence?
No, the, we're talking about the fence, right?
The fence will be cedar.
The fence will be cedar?
Yes. It will weather to a gray.
Okay, all right. So then, so then I'll rephrase my question. So when the public walks by the boardwalk, they'll see what looks like a very tall fence, seven feet six inches, solid, and it'll be made out of cedar, which is probably the most weather capable, resistant wood known. So I know why you chose cedar. I mean, they made saltwater boats out of that. But the point is, when, when it's solid, would, would you agree that the public may perceive it as a wall? Like a, almost like a privacy security wall?
It's a fence.
Okay, it's a fence. I guess, I guess. Okay, you're going to question that. Even though it looks like a wall to the public, you're saying it aligns with the, with the redevelopment plan. It comes under the guidelines that it is a fence. And in, in the guidelines of the redevelopment, it doesn't say anything about a fence stops being a fence and a wall when it's over five feet or there's nothing in there. It just refers to, if you want to call it a fence, it's a fence.
We believe it complies with the requirements for a fence as stated previously.
Okay. Tonight, you're basically testifying about the, the east, the east side and how the fence is connected to the, not connected to the structure?
No, my testimony tonight was to answer some questions that were raised by the board's conflict planner.
Like in terms of.
It was, it was not to revisit the past year and a half of testimony.
So tonight, I can, I can ask you on your testimony about the east side. You just spoke about the, the, the breakaway fence, as you call it. I think, didn't you say that the fence is not attached to the building itself, the three walls?
It has to have, if it has connections, they have to be breakaway connections so that it can meet the CAFRA standards.
Okay. Okay. Can I ask why the east side has a seven feet six inch fence? I mean, does that, does that serve the public aesthetics in some way?
Testimony, he's asking.
Well, I thought, I thought it came up about it shouldn't be a blank wall.
No, you're asking, the question, your question is going beyond the scope of his testimony. Rephrase your question.
Okay. You, you referred to it as an articulated fence, seven feet six inches tall, solid. And I think Mr. Lieberman and some other people asked, is, is that pleasing, aesthetic, whatever? But basically, when, isn't it true when someone walks by, it's just going to look like a tall cedar fence? And, and my question is, why would you design it that way? That people can't see in or people can't see out? I mean, wouldn't it be who the people in the pool inside to want to see the ocean while they're at the pool instead of the inside of a cedar fence, a seven foot fence?
I have to object.
It's a question, it's just a question.
You're going beyond the scope of his testimony. You're asking him for views now. He didn't testify about views, what can be seen from the inside or the outside. He testified according to this report.
Okay. And you also testified about the west side tonight? The front, what you're calling the front?
Mr. Handel asked, answered a question in the report concerning the west side and the length of building on that side.
The question was whether the, whether the frontages had been broken up according to the requirements of the W R P, and I stated yes.
Okay, and isn't it true that you designated tonight that your plan and your interpretation of that building is that it only has a western front? Is that correct? In other words, you're not classifying the seven point six inch fence, solid, as a front, even though it fronts the east side, you're calling it the back, which means the west wall is the front. So you only have one front, correct?
And we testified that our planner will clarify why we have come to that interpretation.
Okay, but as it stands now, you, you are designating that the front of this building is on Ocean Avenue, the west facade, the west facade. And that what we're talking about, the fence, didn't you classify it as it's the back and it's, it's not a front to the east side or the boardwalk?
We said it was not a.
It's not a front. Okay, and wasn't it asked of a, another, or let me ask you.
We said there is no building frontage along the boardwalk.
I understand, I understand. When you, when you were asked that a building at the way you are, that there's a lot of storms here and most of the buildings that survived the storms are not made out of wood. So why, what, why are you saying let's stick with the wood?
This was already asked, this was asked and answered already.
Okay, so you didn't testify to that tonight. I thought you, I thought you mentioned that you want to go with wood because, you want to go with wood because you want it to be a breakaway.
He's answered the question already to the mayor. I know where you, I know what you're saying. He answered the mayor's questions already, yes.
Yes. And, uh, wasn't it pointed out to you that, uh, most structures of wood don't, don't survive storms here?
The mayor already asked his questions, and that's been-
Oh, so in other words, I can't ask anything that anyone else asked?
You know, you're not supposed to be repetitive. If somebody already asked the question, then it's been answered. There's no reason for another person to ask the same question to get the same answer.
Okay. Can I ask them to repeat the answer? Because as far as what I heard, I didn't hear a clear reason why, in a, in a storm pass, why it's gonna be wood, except for the fact that it's made to break away. When the question was asked, everything else-
If the mayor felt his answer was unresponsive, I'm sure he would have asked the question a different way or asked for clarification.
Do you have any more questions, Mr. Magnoli?
Yeah, yeah, I do. But, uh, don't you have another person coming up about, uh, I, I have to say one thing. It is so confusing, the way the public is allowed to ask, because we usually wait weeks before we have to remember something. And then if someone dares to ask something a little bit connected to what we want to ask, but we're not happy with the answer, we're not allowed to ask again. So, I mean, it's like we get nowhere. We really can't, it's just turning the public off. We can't really ask anything. And when are we ever gonna get an opinion?
Mr. Magnoli, do you have, do you have another question that you would like to base on this testimony?
Yes. Uh, sir, when will I, when will I be able to give an opinion on things that you said about this tonight?
He wouldn't be able to answer that. I can answer it for you. At the end, as in every other application that you've attended before either the zoning or the planning board, you will have a chance to testify and give your opinion.
Okay. So I think we're going 18 months now on this, isn't it? So all my questions from the first month, I should be saving?
No.
That should be some meeting.
When you get to the end, and it's not question and answer anymore, it's, it's your opinion. You want to give a testimony, you can testify. You've had plenty of opportunities to ask questions in the past.
Well, look, I get involved in a lot of things. Sometimes I have trouble remembering what I had for breakfast.
Madam Chairwoman, we, we're not getting anywhere with this. Not going in-
Okay, let's move. But I want to, I want to ask the next witness. Can I?
Not yet. After they are called, you'll have a chance to cross-examine them.
Okay.
Once he, once he's called, and once he testifies, you can cross-examine again.
That's tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, we have two other people that have their hands up. Can you please call the next, uh, member of the public, please?
Next, we have Ellen.
Hi, good evening. Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue, Unit 2407. Um, I was wondering if it would be possible to put back up the, um, the diagram from both the north side of the, um, of the building and the east side of the building. My question is going to, um, uh, just for clarification about facades and frontages, um, and, and what we can see from those two views, if it would be possible?
Yeah, we, this is Jennifer Smith. We can put up one at a time. Which one did you want to see first?
Uh, let's do the east side, if, if, if you don't mind.
It's coming up. There we go. So that, this, just for the-
So, now, so my question is about the, um, the upper, what, what is shown above the fence line, and whether, and, um, and up above, uh, above that, whether that is considered frontage or facade, in, in terms of the, um, you know, what is, you know, considered, um, uh, you know, on that side of the, on the east side, on the boardwalk? Because that is visible from the boardwalk above the fence.
Again, our planning consultant will testify to whether, we don't, we do not believe that this constitutes a frontage. Our planning consultant will clarify.
Does it, does it constitute a facade if it's visible from the, the boardwalk area? I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not totally conversant with the-
Sure. So we believe that under the, the, under the definition, that, that frontages are, are sometimes called facades. So technically, under the WRP, if our interpretation is correct, that would not constitute a facade.
Okay. From, uh, uh, thank you. And then from the north side?
Sure. We'll just take a moment to-
Sure.
Just for the record, the north elevation has been marked. There's A71 into the record.
Okay. So the area to the right of the fence and the area above that where the elevator shaft is, are those considered frontages or facades?
We do not believe they are.
And I, um, okay. So I'm confused about that as well, and as, as well as the, the part that's visible above the fence line. And I'm not sure I understand why what is on the, uh, south side and on the west side are facades, but these solid areas are not.
So again, our planning consultant will testify to the, you know, to the definition of building frontages.
Okay. So I may come back to this question after, um, that testimony. Thank you.
So, is that all, Miss?
Uh, no, we have, uh, we have, uh, two more people that are, um, in line here. Who, who have we, who's, uh, who's been, um, who's up, maybe TV? Ms. Lamberton?
Good evening. This is Pam Lamberton, 321 Sunset Avenue. Um, I have a question about the fence, and maybe Mr. Fisher could help me with this. I do not believe that anywhere in the waterfront redevelopment plan, there are fence, um, uh, designations of what, what a fence should be, look like, or height, or anything like that. Um, and if there, if Mr. Fisher agrees with me that there is nothing in the waterfront redevelopment plan about fences, then Mr. Serpico, uh, am I right that it would revert to base zoning, to the zoning that's, uh, relevant in the rest of the city?
Not sure. I'd have to ask Jason. Uh, but the, what about the, do you have any questions for the witness?
Um, I, I just wondered if the, um, it, what, seven, if the restriction is a maximum of six feet high, why they would design a seven-and-a-half-foot fence?
So, i-if I may, on page 61 of the waterfront redevelopment plan, there are provisions concerning yard fences, and indicates yard fences shall be made from closed wood boards, masonry, trellis, lattice, or some combination thereof. The fences may have stucco, brick, or stone bases, and columns between other materials. So there are provisions governing what fences can be made out of. Um, there's also a provision of the waterfront redevelopment plan that says that it explicitly supersedes all other, um, provisions of the Asbury Park Code. And so, uh, the underlying code does not apply. The regular land use code in town does not apply anywhere within the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Okay. I defer to Jack for an opinion on that. Um, and the articulation part, that is, goes into the applicant's property, right? That where the plants are gonna be planted, that's on the applicant property?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have, uh, two more folks that, uh, want to be brought in.
This is a city historian.
Yes, go for it.
Good evening, folks. Warner Baumgartner, 402 Fifth Avenue.
Uh, just, just before you, before you continue, Warner, if you don't mind, can we get, remove this all, can we stop screen sharing? If you don't mind. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, good evening, uh, Mr. Handel. Uh, so your, your testimony was requested in response to the planner's report. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you did testify to the section on page 63 called Building Frontages, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there some reason that you omitted testimony to the other paragraphs and other sections of that paragraph called Building Frontages?
We believe we answered.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We asked at the beginning whether we complied with all of Section 63, and Mr. Uh, Mr. Handel, is your testimony that we comply with all of-
I said, I believe we comply with all of those. Yes.
Okay. So in, in one fell swoop, your testimony is you believe you comply with all sections of building frontages, one through, I mean, look, 11. Is that correct?
We believe we comply with all of them, yes.
Okay. Um, let me turn your attention to, uh, Section 3 of Building Frontages, which you just testified that you believe you comply-
Warner, what page is that on, Warner?
Page 63.
Okay. Page 63, Section 3?
Uh, yes. Building Frontages, Section 3, which was just testified, uh, that there's a belief that-
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had the reference to the right section. That's all.
Um, should I read that section, or would Mr. Handel be so kind as to read that section?
I don't have that in front of me. So you will, it'll have to either be put up or-
Okay. Maybe we could put that up? Is that possible?
I don't-
If you have a question, why don't you read it?
All right.
To your question.
I defer to Jack on that.
Well, you're allowed to ask questions of what he testified to, but if you want to, you know, tie this in with a question, go right ahead. I mean, you can read from it, you know, and say, this is my question, based on what I just read to you, so.
If that's okay with you, that's fine with me. Okay, I'll just reiterate the Section 3 of Facades, which was testified to, uh, a belief that there's a conformance. It says, "The frontages of new buildings shall be harmonious with the blockface on both sides of its street. The existing buildings will provide the design context unless they are non-conforming or non-contributing. Applicants are expected to provide drawn and/or photo documentation of the blockfaces with the frontage of the proposed building drawn within its urban context." Do we have that evidence? Do we have that exhibit?
Are you looking for an exhibit that shows frontage at the, the buildings around? The answer is yes. That's Exhibit A49.
Could you, uh-
But is this, how, how does this tie to my testimony?
Your, your belief is that you're complying with this particular section. I don't believe I've ever seen or a, a exhibit that exhibits the building across the street. Says, "Frontages of new buildings shall be harmonious with the blockface on both sides of its street." To me, that means the building across the street, across Ocean Avenue. I've never seen documentary evidence of what that building looks like in relation to this proposed construction.
Okay.
And it says applicants are expected to provide that evidence. Says so right here.
And I can tell you, I can direct you to Exhibit A49, which shows several of the buildings in the area, and that's up on the website.
Is that, is that a plan view or an elevation view?
I'm sorry?
Is that a plan view or an elevation view?
I will let Mr. Hughes testify as to exactly what that is, because that was his, his exhibit that-
I believe I recall that, and I believe that that's a plan view from the top down, not a elevation view of the facades as they relate to each other.
The facades are actually shown in call-out boxes on A49. And then you can see part of the face of the buildings across the street if you look at the perspective that's A48.
I'm not on the screen.
No, I know that. Uh, these are all available on, on the website. Um, you could see them going through now. Do you want me to-
And Mr. And Mr. Hughes is going to be testifying right after these questions.
Okay, sure. I, I will, I will wait for that testimony if that would be appropriate for this question.
But if, but if you have anything else?
Yes, I do.
Please, please go, go ahead. If it has to do with, with Mr. Handel.
I, I will call on Mr. Handel's attention to the, um, elevation of the north side of the building. Can we see that? I think we have that, correct? The elevation of the north side?
Sure. Mr. Currents will put that up. Just takes a moment.
Sure.
Okay. And this is Exhibit A71 that's been marked into the record.
Okay. This is the north side elevation, correct? Okay, I, I got it. Um, what is this elevation facing? What is-
An access easement.
Beyond that. Of course, we know there's a sidewalk. There's an easement for people to walk on. But what, what property is directly adjacent to this?
So again, if, what is your-
What, are you, are you asking whether it is a building frontage? Is that what you're getting at, Mr. Warner?
Um, no. I'm getting at what is, what, what type, what characterization of property does this elevation face? I'll be more specific. Is it a public open space?
This particular side of the building is on an alley that is used for pedestrian access and has a pedestrian easement.
How do you define alley to make that conclusion?
Mr. Hughes will again take that.
I see. Okay. Isn't it a fact that adjacent to this public access easement is a public open space? Is that not a fact?
Are you referring to Block 124?
Is that the block directly north of this? Then I am.
Okay. Between the building and the adjacent lot on either side, both the north and the south, there is an easement area that is used for pedestrians to walk down an alley to get to the boardwalk.
Okay. I see we're beating around the bush here. As far as I know, I, I'm gonna have to testify. I can't help it. As far as I know-
No, no, no. No, no, no.
All right, okay. I, I'm gonna-
You'll get your chance to bring this all out. I know where you're going. You can bring this all out. You'll have an opportunity, Doran.
I know. It's just extremely frustrating. Um, okay. So you agree that this is an elevation, correct?
But not a facade as defined in the WRP.
Interesting. Okay. Could you bring up the east elevation?
Or? Okay. And again, this was Exhibit A73.
Thank you. Is the boardwalk adjacent to this elevation?
Yes.
Is the boardwalk an open public space?
So we've already, again, this, this is going to go to Mr. Hughes. We've already talked ad nauseam about this, you know, that, that we believe, based on the advice of our planners, that this is not a, that this is not a, you know, so that we've already testified to that. So this is, this is, you know, and we've already told you that all of this will be testified to in greater detail by Mr. Hughes.
I'm, I'm gonna object to the answer as being non-responsive, Jack. It's a simple-
Go on. Your, your questions and Mr. Magnoli's questions as well, were going beyond the scope of this man's expertise. They're planning questions.
No, he testified-
I'm, I'm answering your question. And he's already said it's his belief. If it's yours that he's wrong, you get a chance to say that. You'll, I-
I'm not challenging any prior testimony. I'm asking him to repeat his prior testimony for the record.
I don't need him to repeat his prior testimony. Your questions are relevant. Your questions are relevant, but they really should be asked of Mr. Hughes, because he's the one that this gentleman is relying on for his, for, for his opinions. And you'll be out, you'll be able to cross-examine him on all of this, and, you know, right away. He's, he's the next witness.
Correct. Could Mr. Handel repeat his prior testimony?
Not necessarily. I don't, I just, my testimony exists, like repeating my testimony is not required. Jen, like, let's, we need to move on.
We really-
Knowledge that you testified that this is a boardwalk.
It's a, I, I think, look-
Is it a boardwalk? It's a simple question. Is this or is this not a boardwalk?
Of course. Listen, it is a boardwalk. Mr. Handel has testified that there is a single building frontage under the-
I'm not asking that.
Okay.
The witnesses are going way beyond what I'm trying to establish here. Thank you.
All right. We have one more person- All right, we have one more person that is, that's here. First name, Mike?
Yes, hello. Mike Sazork, three oh five eighth Ave. I had a question from a design perspective, and this may have already been stated, but what is the purpose of the fence from a design perspective?
That actually was not testified to today, so it has to do with what Mr. Handel testified to today.
Okay, what about the, it, it looks like from the east elevation photo that there are slats in the fence. Can I ask a question about that?
Sure. That was, that was testified to today.
Okay, you said it was a solid fence. Are the slats, I mean, it looks like there's holes in the fence. Can you see through the fence somewhere from the boardwalk?
No. There are alternating, there are alternating boards that are either flat or or perpendicular to that in order to create shadow lines and further articulation.
Okay, so when you look through one of those slats from the boardwalk, you'll just see another fence post?
You do not see through.
You, you can't see through at all? And, and, and what's, what's directly behind the, behind the fence on the, on the, the club property?
Again.
Is that, is that a walkway?
Not.
That, that was not testified to today. I'm sorry.
Will, will there be an opportunity to ask someone about, about what's behind the fence?
Those, actually, those witnesses have testified over the past eighteen months already, so at this point, those, those, those witnesses are, we're already beyond that at this point.
Okay, what about?
You can, at the, at the very end of this application, as with every application, you have three minutes to have to provide any comments that you care to provide. But at this point, we're on questions having to do with presentations and testimony that people have done today.
What about the height of the fence as a design choice?
That was testified to. Go ahead.
I can ask a question about that?
Yeah.
You asked a question about the height of the fence.
Yeah, so what, what is, why was seven foot six chosen as the height of the fence?
Not relevant to my testimony, I don't believe.
But the height, which is just the height of the fence, which is reiterating, it's seven foot six inches.
Well, could, from, from a design perspective, could it be four feet high?
There actually was testimony about that previously when Mr. Handel, I believe it was the first time testified. And all of his testimony is available on A P T V. The first time he testified was at the May two thousand nine, May two thousand nineteen hearing.
Okay, and as far as the, the wood at the fence go, I think there was some testimony about that today. It's gonna be untreated cedar, is that correct?
Cedar, yep.
My, my understanding is that's, that's, I have some on my house. It's a fairly soft wood. You know, being so close to the boardwalk, I mean, you're, obviously, you're gonna have people, kids who ever, you know.
Excuse me, testifying. You gotta ask a question.
Okay, so what's, what's, what's the, what's the maintenance requirements on, on that wood, given that it's gonna be untreated and, and directly adjacent to the boardwalk?
That's outside the scope of the testimony. His testimony about the fence and the size were related specifically quest, to questions that were raised or issues that were raised by our planner. Not, not, not about the aesthetics or anything like that. So the, the question goes beyond the scope of the testimony. His testimony was in relation directly to the report.
Okay, I, I'll save, I'll save my questions for, for somebody else. Thank you.
All right, at this point, I don't see any more hands raised. So let's, are we ready for the next witness?
Sorry, that will be Keenan Hughes, who is our professional planner.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, I can't see him. Oh, yes, I can. Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Psalmless, where the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
It's Keenan Hughes, H U G H E S.
Right, Madam Chairwoman, for the record, Mr. Hughes has testified as a planner before this board on numerous occasions. I don't think we have to ask him his credentials.
Nope, we're good.
He's already been qualified by a planner when he last testified before the board.
Yes, okay.
So, Mr. Hughes, the last time he testimony, he testified was before the plans were revised in March of two thousand twenty. Have you reviewed the plans that have been submitted in March two thousand twenty and thereafter?
Yes.
And upon reviewing those plans, have you come to a conclusion about whether any variances or design exceptions are required for this application?
I have. In my opinion, no variances or design exceptions are required for this application.
And you previously testified that as a conditional use, that this use met the conditional use criteria, correct?
Correct.
So other than preliminary and final major site plan approval, are there, is there any other relief required?
No.
Now, Mr. Hughes, there were several questions of Mr. Handel about the building frontage and which side of the property was the building frontage. Can you elaborate in that area?
Yeah, in my opinion, the frontage of this proposed building is located along Ocean Avenue.
And how did you reach that conclusion?
Well, Ocean Avenue is a public street. It's the primary facade of the building. It's the one in which the most, you know, design and workmanship has been focused upon for good reason. And it's the primary contributor to sort of creating a pedestrian-oriented environment within the waterfront.
Okay, would you agree that the sides of the property that face to the north and south face along pedestrian easements that are alleys under the definitions or under the interpretation of the waterfront redevelopment plan?
I agree. The side elevations of the building, the north and south elevations of the overall project are located along access easements, which basically serve as pedestrian connectors or alleys in between Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk.
And the rear of the property, where there is the fence, do you believe that that is a building frontage as it is defined under the waterfront redevelopment plan?
Well, it's not a building. It's a fence. So in that regard, it's, it's not considered a building frontage under the plan.
Okay. Those are all the questions that I have for Mr. Hughes.
Does anybody from the planning board have any questions of Mr. Hughes? Or I should say, first, the professionals, do we have anything from the professionals that would like to question Mr. Hughes?
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, does anyone from the planning board have any questions of Mr. Hughes?
John Moore.
Go ahead, John.
Excuse me. So if the backyard, rear yard, whatever we're gonna call it today, had a breakaway wall, not a fence, would the boardwalk be a pedestrian activity in a public open space? And then have to have frontage and?
No, the building is not located along the boardwalk, so whether it's considered a fence or a wall in the scenario you laid out wouldn't make a meaningful difference in terms of having to comply with the frontage architectural guidelines in the plan. In both cases, it, it does not have to apply because it's not a building frontage.
Thank you.
Um, can you, can you review, I know that we had some questions from the public having to do with frontage versus facade on the east, I mean, on the north and south side? Can you just go through that? Because that seemed to be a point that, and actually also on the east side, there was a question of frontage versus facade.
Yeah, so I'll start on the east side. Again, there, there really is no building frontage along the easterly property line, so therefore, it's my opinion, this is a fence. It's not, doesn't fall under the architectural guidelines that would apply to building walls. As for the north elevation, there is a relatively small portion of the building, which does, it is located along that easement area. And the balance of that frontage is actually the fence, same design that is located along the boardwalk. And in my opinion, this is really, it's sort of a side elevation of the overall project. And it's located on what I would consider to be an alley. And alley is not a defined term in the waterfront redevelopment plan. It's a term that's, that's used. And in this case, you know, this is an area that's being used as a pedestrian connector in between Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk. So in my opinion, that falls under the, what I think is the intent of utilizing the, the term alley in the waterfront redevelopment plan. Likewise, for the southerly elevation, there is a greater expanse of building as compared to the north elevation that is located and visible from the pedestrian accessway. But likewise, it's my opinion, it's considered an alley. It's not a primary building frontage. And therefore, it's not subject to all of the architectural guidelines of the plan. Now, having said all of that, I think it's just worth reiterating and kind of providing a little context here. When you look at other pavilions within the waterfront, having the side elevation where you have the pedestrian connectivity in between Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk, oftentimes, that's where service entries are located. Those are not the primary, you know, contributors to, to pedestrian-oriented sort of design within the waterfront. Here, even though they're not the primary building frontages, it is my opinion that both elevations, the north and the south, are quite attractive. I mean, there, there's visual interest there with respect to landscaping, particularly on the south elevation. You do have a couple of doors. So there is, it, it's not simply a blank wall. And likewise, for the north, you have the decorative fence, which is articulated. And yet another entryway there. And then, of course, I agree with Mr. Handel's testimony with respect to the easterly fence. Even though it's not considered a building wall, there's been a lot of care and attention given to the visibility and overall aesthetic of that, of that fence in terms of the variation, in terms of the actual planking of the boards, and then the insets that are created to provide those landscape areas. And it's gonna be a very attractive fence along the boardwalk frontage.
I think that, that there's some struggle with understanding that what is defined in the waterfront redevelopment area and some of the words that, that are being used that when we're talking about traffic flow and things like that, the, you know, the, the fence, though lovely as it is, it's a beautiful fence, with the, with the various plantings that are in there, I would also, you know, there's, there's a lot of traffic that's on the boardwalk as well as on Ocean Avenue. Both are heavily traveled. Though I do understand that within the definitions that, that, I understand what you're saying. Does anybody else from the planning board have anything to say? Any other questions?
Question.
Go ahead.
The, the east side of this property, which as we all have made established is a fence, would that be considered an elevation, in your opinion?
I don't think so, because to me, I think elevation is typically referring to an actual building facade as opposed to a fence.
Okay.
Anyone else from the planning board have any questions? Okay, Mr. Lieberman, any questions for Mr. Hughes?
Yes, thank you. I'm just proud of myself that I was able to get the mic on first time. Mr. Hughes, good evening again. How is this fence that's all completely solid different than a blank wall?
Well, how is it different than a blank wall? First of all, it's not a wall. Secondly, it's an articulated decorative privacy fence, which has, you know, as I just described, the variation in terms of the way the actual boards are constructed to provide a little variation in sort of the, the depth of the plane, and then also the landscaped inset areas that are created. So this is going to be not a fence that creates a deadening sort of environment for someone walking along the boardwalk, but it will have some visual interest. And, and it's really intended to simply help sort of, it's, it's gonna fade into the background and be something that's, that's pleasant and it's there. It's obviously not a retail storefront, but it certainly isn't a blank wall in terms of the, that concept as it's, as it's discussed in the waterfront redevelopment plan. That would, in my mind, literally be like an actual blank wall running, running along the, you know, most of the width of a block along a parking garage, for example. I mean, that's, that's what the plan is really trying to avoid.
Is there a definition of wall in this plan?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you agree with me that not all walls are connected to buildings?
Well, you could have a retaining wall that isn't connected to a building.
And there's other kinds of playground walls that are walls also, and they're not part of buildings, right?
Right.
So the concept of wall isn't a concept that's, that exclusively applies to buildings. It can have multiple purposes, correct? Multiple connotations, multiple uses, right?
Well, I think if your, if your question is, could you have a wall that's not attached to a building, the answer is yes.
Yes. So, so before, when you indicated this is a fence but not a wall, because it's not part of the building, that really doesn't define whether it's a wall or not. That's not dispositive. In fact, there's no definition of wall in, in, in the act, in the plan, is there? The waterfront redevelopment plan doesn't even define for a wall. It's nowhere. Isn't that correct? Now, did you do a count in terms of?
Did he answer your question?
Is it correct?
Can you repeat the question? I think it's one that's already been asked and answered, but could you repeat it?
I think that's true. The, did you do a head count in terms of the number of people that walk on that part of the boardwalk as compared to the number of people that walk on that part of Ocean Avenue?
No.
Do you know whether or not there are more people or less people who walk on that part of the boardwalk than on that part of Ocean Avenue?
No, but the answer would not impact my opinion in any way.
Well, except for when you indicated why the frontage was on Ocean Avenue, you talked about the concentration of pedestrian activity on Ocean Avenue. Isn't that correct?
Because that's the, of the three sides of the building that are sort of exposed here. The Ocean Avenue frontage is the primary one. We don't have a building frontage along the boardwalk, nor is it a requirement to have a building frontage on the boardwalk.
Well, as a matter of fact, if you go to, let's go to A seventy-three, if we could.
I think that's.
Where are we going?
A seventy-three. Exhibit A seventy-three.
One moment, Rick. There we go.
That's, that's not it. That's not it. Yeah, that's it. That's A seventy-three. Okay, so this is what we're talking about. Now, when you're looking at this, first of all, that's, that, that fence over there. do you agree with the testimony of Mr. Handel, it's a breakaway fence?
Well, that's my understanding, and that's not my area of expertise, but I've been informed that it is in fact a breakaway fence.
Do you know whether or not this is connected to the other three walls of this building?
That was testimony, I think you asked Mr. Handel that, and it's more appropriate to ask him that.
Okay. And you, so then you don't, you're not familiar with the concept of breakaway under CAFRA and how that works then, right? That's not your area, and you, you, you can't provide testimony about that. Is that correct?
Well, I'm generally familiar, but it's, I'm not a structural engineer or civil engineer, so it's outside my area of expertise.
And you, but you would agree that when we look at that fence, it's completely solid. You can't see through it. And, and, and it's blank, and that there's no adoration whatsoever. There's no windows, there's no, the only thing that's there is wood. Right? It's all that's there.
No, I mean, that, that's mischaracterizing my testimony.
Okay, other than wood, what's there?
Well, as I've described maybe three times already, yes, the, the material is wood, but it has some articulation and variation in terms of the, the plane of the fence. And then there's also the landscaped areas that have been created through the regular insets along that frontage to help it, to help create a visually interesting fence along the boardwalk.
It's blank, though, right? There's nothing else on it except wood, right?
Mr. Lieberman, Mr. Hughes has answered that, and he's answered about how the, exactly how the fence articulates, how the boards themselves articulate. It's been answered by Mr. Hughes and by Mr. Handel.
Right, but the articulation has nothing to do with it, it's blank, does it?
Actually, it does.
Blank where it articulates and it's blank where it doesn't, right?
There's also, the actual boards themselves vary from flat to perpendicular. And that's been testified to by both Mr. Hughes and Mr. Handel.
What's that part, what is that behind, when you're looking at this picture on the left, what is that cement behind the, behind the wooden wall? What is that?
You're looking at a portion of the building.
Okay. And does that meet the, does that meet the requirements for building frontage? That's, that fronts a public open area, doesn't it? Public open space?
No, that's an interior facade of the beach club facility. That's not considered a frontage.
Okay, it's visible from the boardwalk, yes? Or not because of the height of the fence?
What I was going to say is that, I guess, depending on your vantage point, you may be able to see a portion of that facade.
Do you agree that the, the waterfront development plans rules as they apply to yard fences is what is applicable to this wooden fence?
Potentially.
Did you?
Do you have a specific question?
Well, there was testimony before that that was the, actually, I think it was Smith that indicated, if I recall, that was where there, that's, there had been some suggestion that there was nothing about fences in the plan, and then Ms. Smith referred to that section on page 61. Do you agree that that's the section that covers this fence and is applicable to this fence?
I think there are references to, to fences several times in the architectural design guidelines. I know wood is one of the recommended materials for fences.
Would you consider this to be a yard fence?
Mr. Lieberman, are you referring to section 61, page 61, where it says, yard fences for side and rear yards shall be made of closed wood boards, masonry, trellis, lattice, or some combination thereof? Is that the section that you're?
That's what I'm referring to. I, it actually was, it was you, Ms. Smith, that I appreciated who brought it up in the first instance, and that's what I'm referring to, yes. And what I'm asking now is do you?
Stuart, that is what, page 61, what section?
Page 61, and it is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th bullet point down on page 61.
Is that what you're talking about, Stuart?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you consider this to be a yard fence?
Well, it's a perimeter fence of the property. The plan really does not define or discuss what constitutes a, a front, side, or rear yard. And as was pointed out earlier, the plan also completely supersedes the underlying land use ordinance. I will say, just as a point of reference, the Asbury Park ordinance, it does define rear lot line as the lot line opposite and most distant from the front lot line, or the point at which the side lot lines meet. On corner lots, there shall be only one rear lot line. And front lot line shall mean the lot line separating a lot from a street right of way. So suppose if that concept was applied here, this would constitute a rear yard. And this would be the rear lot line in a rear, a frontage, a rear fence. But again, you know, this plan completely supersedes the underlying ordinance, so it's somewhat open to interpretation. I think in this case, being that the primary facade of the building is located along Ocean Avenue, behind that, you have some of the outdoor, you know, cool seating and other amenity spaces which are enclosed by this fence. I think it's appropriate to consider it a a yard fence, probably a rear yard fence in this instance.
All that testimony you gave before about what's in the regular code was of no moment here, right? Because as you just said, I was waiting for you to say it. It supersedes it entirely, right?
Yeah, I think I said that at least twice in the statement I just gave. I just, I also said that I was providing that as a point of reference for, for the board and for the public.
I don't have anything further. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for your patience and your courtesy. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. We have, we're now opening it up for public questions having to do with Mr. Hughes's testimony. I see that we have one person that has their hand up. Now it's time to bring your hands up. Sorry?
This is Alexis Taylor, board member. I just wanted to add a request when people are presenting questions. I think for consistency, we asked earlier if they were part of the, say, Asbury waterfront or not, just to know whether or not they were represented. Do we want to continue with that?
We haven't done it in a number of meetings.
We haven't? Okay, that's fine.
We have not.
All right, no worries.
Okay, what I would like to do, if everyone doesn't mind, before we get to public questions, if we wouldn't mind taking a five-minute break, and then we'll resume within five minutes with public questions.
Motion to take a five-minute break.
Right.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes afoot.
All right, I think we can, I think we can begin again.
We'll call everybody back to order?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take the roll call. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Trudy Syfax is absent. Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Galipo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
Barbara Krzyczek?
Here.
Okay, everybody that was here before, or is here again?
All right, we're at the portion of the meeting where we are to do the public questions. I see that we have two attendees. If you can unmute, please. Ellen, AP TV? Oh, just one thing before we begin. Ellen, before you ask your question, anybody that wants to ask questions, please raise their hand with a star nine if you're doing it via phone or via Zoom, via the raise hand capability, just so that, because I'm only seeing a few of these. So, okay, now I get it. All right, all right, Ms. Michelson?
Thank you. I need to identify myself again?
Yes, please.
Sure. Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue, Unit 2407.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hughes, I have a question for you that I had asked before, and I was told it would be for the planner. Could you, for my purposes, and maybe for the purposes of other people that are here, could you explain what the difference is between a frontage and a facade? I know that there were references that were made to both.
Well, the, the terms are used, well, they're both used in the plan, obviously. Frontage is, it is defined in the plan. It's on page 63. There's a section called building frontages. And under number two, it says, "The frontage of a building is a primary contribution to pedestrian activity. The frontage is that elevation which faces a public street or public open space." Facade, to my knowledge, is not a term that's defined in the plan. But that's a broader concept that basically, in my opinion, encompasses any, you know, building elevation facing the public realm.
So, so the question that I had asked before, and I would like to ask again, is that when we look at the, the diagrams of, of the building, when we look at the east side from the, the boardwalk side, and I know that the, you know, you're considering the primary frontage being that on Ocean Avenue where the entrances and, and those elements. But when we look from the boardwalk and beyond where the fence is, would the, I don't know if it's, yeah, if we can get that back up again. Thank you. The area above the boardwalk, I, I beg your pardon, above the fence and the area, that large area where that encompasses the elevator shaft and so on, I don't know whether that, is that considered frontage? Is that considered facade? Those solid, the, the solid parts of the building above the fence?
Well, in my opinion, as, as I mentioned earlier, in my opinion, this is not a frontage of the building. It's really an interior facade to the facility. It may have some minimal visibility depending on your vantage point from the boardwalk. Talking about the, the lower portion of, of the building as you see it in that view.
But given the high, the elevation of the, the building, you know, the entire building and the elevator shaft, how could that not be considered, you know, a frontage visible from the open space of the boardwalk?
It does, especially the upper portion definitely will have some visibility. But in my opinion, it's not a, a building frontage that's really located adjacent to the public realm that's subject to all the architectural guidelines of the plan that, that applies to frontages.
And wouldn't that, wouldn't that also be what you would see from both the south side and the north side? Those structural elements that are above the fence line as either a frontage or a facade? If a frontage is, is facing an open, a public open space, I'm not sure I understand how that would not be considered frontage given that it's open space on all three sides, the north, the east, and the, the south.
So what is your question?
I, I, I'm trying to understand why those would not be considered frontages. If, if frontages, as you just defined it, is, is facing a public open space and the boardwalk is a public open space, it's open areas to the north and to the south, aren't those frontages?
Well, certainly along the east, we have a fence. We don't have a building frontage. A building frontage on the boardwalk would be like what you see at the first or, you know, Third Avenue pavilions. We have, you know, actual access directly from a building onto the boardwalk. We don't have that here. There's a fence along the boardwalk and the building is, is set back from the property, from the easterly property line. Then, from the south, the building, the limited elevations of the building are located on what I would consider is, is the plan describes them alleys. They're just pedestrian connections in between Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk.
But on either side, to the north and to the south of those alleys, there are no other structures. So aren't those open public spaces?
There is, beyond the accessways, there are open spaces located to the north and the south. But the building frontage itself is adjacent to these accessways. And as I testified earlier, there are really side elevations of the building, not unlike what's found in some of the other pavilion structures in the waterfront. Where you don't have back on fronts in those locations.
The other building structures in the waterfront have other buildings next to them. So it's not open spaces. So I'm confused by these definitions and don't understand how, if you see from this, this, this picture, I mean, the, the elevator shaft and that whole upper area.
This is not a question?
No, you're, you're going way beyond the question. You're actually giving your opinion, which is.
Well, I'm asking the question and, and.
You've gone way beyond asking the question, and he's answered your question. You may not agree with his answer, which is perfectly fine, and you may, you may say.
I'm trying to understand if a frontage faces a, a public open space as Mr. Hughes just said, then how the, the north, south, and east sections or, you know, views this building from those areas which are open public spatial.
I get it. Mr. Hughes, would you please give your answer? What your, what your opinion is regarding this?
Yeah, all I can say is, and just to correct a statement you made earlier, the other pavilions also are adjacent to open space areas. Many of them have this similar condition where they have access easements either on or adjacent to the property. One example you may want to take a look at is in between the Fifth Avenue Pavilion and the Fourth Avenue Pavilion. I know the Fifth Avenue Pavilion certainly was one that was recently reconstructed. But what you'll see is the facade along the access in between Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk on the Fifth Avenue Pavilion is almost entirely blank. That's adjacent to a designated open space parcel. Likewise, the Fourth Avenue Pavilion is also a blank wall essentially, which is also adjacent to an open space parcel.
Okay, I, I, I'm still left confused, but given the height of this, you know, what, what we're seeing here is concerning to me, but thank you for your response.
Okay, we have a couple of other people that have raised their hands. Can we please have, open it up to Steve, please?
Thank you. Steve Viviano. I live at 1501 Ocean Avenue. Mr. Hughes, since, since you raised the, you know, the idea of thinking about some of the other pavilions on the boardwalk, my question is about the First Avenue Pavilion. When you look at the pavilion that houses Stella Marina, all the activity of kitchen staff, garbage going in and out is all done on Ocean Avenue. Does that at all change the definition of where the front is? Because in that pavilion, the front is clearly the ocean side and all the back, you know, kitchen stuff happens on Ocean Avenue. You wouldn't want to walk by there because of the, just the smell. But all the, all the back office kind of activity happens on Ocean Avenue in that pavilion?
That would not change my opinion.
You still think that's the front even on First Avenue? Okay.
No, excuse me, no, I don't. My, my opinion is that the frontage here is Ocean Avenue. I haven't done a study of the First Avenue Pavilion. I'm generally familiar with it. But certainly with this building, the frontage is Ocean Avenue.
Oh, I see. Okay. So it could be different for different pavilions. Okay, got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next person that we have is, we have the, Jeff Jones, please?
Thank you. Just staying on this, this is Jeffrey Jones, 1501 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm just curious about, going back to Ms. Michelson's questions, or line of question, but this, a slightly different take on it. What is the distance between the wooden wall slash fence, depending on your perspective, and the interior wall, the building that is visible above the fence?
I don't have that exact dimension. I'm going to say it's roughly 10 feet.
And then, is that 10 feet measured from the outside articulations or with the, what the inset into articulations? I'm, I'm not an architect, so I don't, I know I'm not using the right terminology.
Yeah, I mean, the fence isn't very thick. I mean, it's maybe, it's like roughing edge, so it wouldn't really matter.
But where it's, where it's set back some, is it, is, I don't know how much the set back is?
Yeah, let's say it's roughly 10 feet from wherever it's inset.
Okay, and will there be, will that space be usable and used for storage or things like that?
Beyond this, this scope, there, there were floor plans that showed that, what the interior would be, and it was testified to previously, and those are available on, on the website in the exhibit package.
Okay, that was just actually a side point to whether my, my real question was. So if, if the fence wasn't there, in your opinion, would that interior wall then constitute a facade or a, whatever the other word was, a frontage?
Possibly. I mean, it's not something I've evaluated.
Okay, so is, is there a function of the fence for that, like 30 or 40 feet of, of building there? Other than maybe to have it, to not constitute a facade any longer?
Yes, there certainly is above and beyond that purpose. It's to enclose the facility and provide a sense of privacy.
But in that first 30 or 40 feet or so, there's no windows, are there? So you're providing privacy to, to an interior wall?
I'm not following your question.
Well, just, I'm starting at that southernmost point up to about the 30 or 40 feet down. I'm guessing that's about how much, how much distance there is of, of wall there, because as I recall, the building is kind of L-shaped.
Yes. As far as the functionality of the inside pool area, that was definitely part of prior testimony.
I'm not, I'm not going to the pool area. I'm talking specifically about this area that you'd said is 10 feet from the boardwalk setback? It doesn't look like that much, but maybe it is.
And what's your, what's the question? I mean, there's, there's operational, you know, back office sort of backup house facilities in that area. All of that's enclosed within the fence.
Within the fence or within the wall?
Both. I mean, there's some backup house occurring within the building itself. There's some, you should take a look at the floor plans. There, there are some activities occurring within those areas.
Okay, what was that reference again as to where I could see those?
On, on the website in the exhibit package, and those were testified to rather early in the process, so they would probably be in the first 10 or 15 exhibits, of applicant's exhibits.
Okay. And can, can we also look at the north side? This one's sort of hard to see. So the fence slash wall starts at the boardwalk and then goes to this other point. What's on the other side of it? Immediately on the other side? Is there any, are there any interior walls immediately inside the fence?
I mean, I hate to say this, but we're sort of getting into walking through the floor plans. We've already presented a lot of testimony in that. I certainly did not provide that testimony this evening. Jen, I would defer to you.
That's correct. The entire interior layout was testified to previously.
I'm really just trying to understand how much distance there is between the fence and the interior, what you, what you've characterized as the interior wall. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Mr. Handel previously testified that from the boardwalk, the building is about 70 feet.
Well, I just heard it was 10 feet for that one section.
10 feet in that one section, 70 feet to the part of the building that's further back.
Okay, and then on the north side, how far is there between the fence slash wall and the, whatever interior walls there are?
Mr. Handel didn't testify to that this evening, but that was previously testified to earlier. Like I said, the plans are available on the website, and there was testimony concerning those dimensions earlier.
Okay.
Earlier, many months ago, not many this evening.
I apologize. I'm, I'm new to this process, so I, I'm not familiar with all that testimony.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have the, the next person up? We have two more. We have the, can we bring up 350?
Yeah, Ernest Mignoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I'm looking out my windows now. I look right at the, the subject property that we're talking about. So it's, it's pretty effective to me what goes on there. So relative to that, the fence, the wall, the, the alleys, the sidewalks, it seems like, is it your testimony or everyone's testimony tonight, it seems to indicate that there's actually open public space on all four sides, like a road, Ocean Avenue? You say there's open public space on the north side abutting, open public space on the south side abutting, and the boardwalk is open public space. Isn't that what you testified?
No.
Okay, then what are those surrounding areas? The boardwalk is not open public space?
We have been over this already. We have been over the fact that there's a boardwalk.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. When I was asking the last witness, you said these questions would be better suited
Excuse me for one second.
To the next witness.
Mr. Mignoli, Mr. Hughes, he asked you a question. Do you consider that open public space within the context of, of the redevelopment plan, facades and the like? That's the question.
I consider Ocean Avenue frontage facing a public street, a public right-of-way. The north and south elevations are facing a access easement which is located on the subject property. Easterly elevation, it's not a building facade. It's simply the fence, and it's located along the boardwalk, which is certainly a public open space.
That's your answer, correct? Yeah, well, that is your answer. So then you're declaring the north and side, south side because of what you're declaring an alley that you're declaring it's not open space on the north and the south, just on the west and the east, correct?
No.
All right, well, okay, okay, go ahead. I think we clarified?
No, 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 let him answer your question.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
So what is your question, Mr. Mignoli?
Okay, that's why I was going to ask again. All right, so we just seem to clarify in your opinion, as you stated, in your opinion, you said that the east side and the west side are open space, open public space. Okay, I'm all right with that. But some of us, and I'm asking you now, the north side and the south side, you're saying are not really open public space because they're on an alley. Is that correct?
Yes, my testimony is that those frontages are located on access.
No, no, we're talking about the north and the south now. We're not talking about the east and west. The north and the south.
Yeah, that's, he's answering your question.
Well, that really wasn't an answer, because what I'm trying to get at is...
And let him answer your questions. Let him answer your questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I just answered your question as to the north and south. And just to repeat, those sides of the use, the property are located along pedestrian alleys that connect Ocean Avenue to the boardwalk, which are located on the subject property.
Okay. Is it your testimony and the previous expert's testimony?
Yeah, the answer about the previous testimony.
Okay. Is it your, is it your, okay. Is it your testimony that the alleys are not defined in the redevelopment program? There is no definition of an alley?
That's correct.
Okay. So then what is it, a sidewalk?
What is what?
In other words, in other words, people are walking on the north side and the south side from Ocean Avenue to the boardwalk, from the boardwalk to Ocean Avenue. Also, if you observe all the properties along Ocean Avenue, which you said you, you have studied some of them, usually the facilities use those alleys, as you refer to, to drive cars on, customers pull up there to buy things. Okay, so the question is, will, will those alleys be used for anything other than pedestrians?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, certainly in the intent, the easements for pedestrian connectivity, I'm not aware of any other utilization of those, of those areas.
Okay. Are, are you aware that city vehicles and public vehicles to service the whole area use them like vehicles regularly? That's why they're wide. They're not like a sidewalk. They're wide enough for vehicles to go. When the city trucks want to get on the boardwalk, that's what they go up and down.
That's irrelevant.
Okay, it's irrelevant. Let me move on. Let me move on.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Okay, okay. So are, you're aware that some of the clientele from the speech club might be associated with the ocean club owners, correct?
That's not part of this.
Okay, okay, can I, then I'm going to ask a question. Are you aware that, that will there be or could there be any electric type vehicle that'll use to shuttle customers, may in fact use those alleyways?
It has not been part of any testimony.
It's way beyond the scope.
Well, you know, you know why we're at a big disadvantage? Because there's no model of this property.
No, 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 you're not, your, your question was on the scope, asked your next question.
Okay. Is, is there, is there a reason why the public can't see a model?
A model is not required as a checklist item for this application.
Okay, okay. In other words, the, the public won't be afforded a model because it's not required?
Not required of this applicant or any other applicant to the planning board.
I understand. You mean, well, it wasn't always that way, because...
Mr. Mignoli?
Okay, okay. On any other developments on the boardwalk, are you aware that a model was put on display?
That was not testified to? Irrelevant?
Okay, that's irrelevant to this. Okay, all right, I see where we're going now. Okay. So, if, if in fact the north and south side are, they're going to be blank walls, and then in front of them is going to be a seven-foot fence, correct? Seven and a half foot?
That was not the testimony this evening, no.
Okay. If I'm walking from the boardwalk to Ocean Avenue on the north side, I'm headed west, what will be next to my left arm? A fence?
As shown in this exhibit that's on the screen now, Exhibit A71, there will be a continuation of the decorative fence for the most
Okay, okay.
Most of the length in between the boardwalk and Ocean Avenue, and then a limited portion of building facade.
Okay. Is it your testimony that aesthetically or in actuality, the fence, the seven-and-a-half-foot fence will go from Ocean Avenue on the north side to the boardwalk, will go along the boardwalk, and then it'll go along the south side back to Ocean Avenue? So in other words, is it your testimony that the seven-and-a-half-foot teak, was it teak or mah, no, cedar, cedar solid fence will in fact be on three sides of that building?
Wasn't his testimony. That was Mr. Handel's testimony.
Okay, well then, I'll ask him. Will that fence be on three sides?
There will be portions of that fence located on three sides of this lot.
Okay. Will, will it be the complete east side?
I, we have had a...
Oh, come on. Wait a minute. I'm just trying to clarify. Will the fence go on the complete east side? It's, it's just a yes or no question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Will the fence go from the boardwalk to Ocean Avenue on the north side?
No.
Will it partially go down?
Yes.
How far?
I don't have that exactly mentioned.
Okay, okay, that's an answer. And on the south side, it'll go down from the boardwalk to ocean, but you don't know how far?
Only a very, very small portion. It wraps the corner.
Okay, and, and to the best of your ability, a small portion would be what, three feet?
Mr. Handel testified as to the lengths of materials.
Oh, he did?
Yes, he did.
Okay. And I guess I should have remembered that, right? But I can't, but you wouldn't tell me, would you?
It was earlier this evening, sir.
Well, I'm not as young as I used to be. I don't remember what he said. Can you help me out?
No.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think you would. Okay, let's get back to the east side now. And I think some of the residents across the street are asking critical questions, and that is the seven-foot, seven-foot-six-inch fence solid on the boardwalk. It's right against the boardwalk. It's a wall. Well, you're going to call it a fence. For our purposes, it looks like a wall for people who live here, but, okay, it's the fence. Let's call it the fence. So now, the fence goes up seven-and-a-half feet. Now I'm standing on the boardwalk. I'm looking west. How much building facade will I see of the rear, that you're calling the rear of the building? In other words, it's, it's two floors?
That's beyond, that's beyond the scope of his testimony. He's testifying as a planner regarding what's going on from a planning perspective, not an engineering perspective.
But doesn't it seem like everybody wants to know how much above the fence will be?
I don't care about what your questions are. Everybody else will speak for themselves.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Did you say you don't, you don't care?
I don't ca, I care about what your questions are.
Okay, now you care. I thought you said you don't care.
About what you can't tell us about everyone else. You can only speak for Ernest Mignoli, and you can only ask questions.
I don't have to. You speak for me most of the time. So let me get back to the expert.
Ernest Mignoli, I'm giving you a fair warning. The next time, I'm going to mute you. Okay, go.
Okay, well, it won't be the first time. So now, let's get back. So in other words, the seven-and-a-half fence, there will, there will be some of the rear facade that you'll see when you walk by. Isn't it two stories?
Yeah, there is a bulkhead on the top of the building, and yes, there will be some visibility depending on where you're standing on the boardwalk of the upper portions of that structure.
Okay, and on the, and on the boardwalk side, do you know how much, how tall the facade is of the wall behind the fence?
You can certainly review the plans and get the specific dimension.
Well, is it more than, is it more than 20 feet?
The answer, the answer is that the structure will have some visibility from the boardwalk.
Okay, I, I under- understand, but is there any way I could quantify some?
That's been testified to at prior hearings.
Okay, I think it was, uh, twenty, almost thirty feet. So that means, would it be correct if I remember it as twenty to thirty feet, not counting the taller elevator shaft, that when someone's standing on the boardwalk over the seven and a half foot fence, they're gonna see a lot of something?
That's a statement, and.
Well, no, I said it, isn't that, isn't that a fact?
Well, it's irrelevant to, to his planning testimony.
Oh, it's irrelevant?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, uh, the, the rear of the structure on the inside of the fence. Is that gonna have any windows or anything?
That's been asked already this evening.
Okay, okay, he didn't talk about that.
No, he's not.
Okay, okay, alright, sorry, you don't have to go into detail everything.
I do.
Say no.
Just ask the questions. I, I could, I, I know what I'm doing. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, okay, uh. So, uh, uh, the fence itself, is it, in, in terms of the redevelopment plan and CAFRA, et cetera, wouldn't it have to talk about the integrity of a structure on the boardwalk where the public is, human beings, children, and people? You put up a structure. And doesn't it have to address five year, ten year, one hundred year storms? And I'm talking about the fence.
Mr. Hughes did not testify as to five year, ten year, or hundred year storms. That's beyond the scope of his testimony.
Okay, uh, is, is, is the, is the fence, uh, comparable in strength to the other buildings on that face the boardwalk? In other words. They didn't talk about that either. Wow, I feel like you have to be Columbo to ask a simple question, but let me try and ask another way. Uh, so it's a solid seven and a half foot fence, right up against the boardwalk. I think you testified there's about ten feet in between the back of the beach club and the fence. Is that correct?
That's what Mr. Hughes testified to generally.
Okay, generally, right, and then I think when asked what that space is for. I think you may have deferred that it, it, you're just, you're the planner, you're not the, the engineer, I guess.
Well, you're simply replying to questions that other people have asked. Is there a new question?
Yeah, yeah, there is. So on the, on the north side, uh, will there be any, uh, doors in this fence? Like, you know, sometimes people take a solid fence. And they put a hasp on it and a lock, and they hinges, and they make a door. Well, either the east side, or wherever the length on the north side, or whatever the length on the south side of that cedar solid, seven and a half foot fence, will it have any sections that open?
I, I think that would have been more of a question for Handel.
I mean, yes, there's, there are doors on the north and south elevations.
Of the buil- of the building.
No, no, of the fence, sir, not the. So in other words, that's what my question is. If I know that there's doors on the north and the south elevation. My question is, when you put the fence up, what meaning does a door have? If the alley is on the outer side of the fence?
It's irrelevant to his planning testimony.
Okay, well then, then let me just ask it again the way I asked it, which was.
Your whole line of questioning has nothing to do with a planner. It all, it's all design features that you're asking for, and the applicant has testified on numerous occasions as to what is going to be built there, where the doors are located on north and south.
No, 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 I'm asking about the fence.
I know, but you're asking a planner about construction details. Is there, are there gonna be gates and the like? He's not an architect, he's not an engineer, and he didn't design the project. He's the planner. You have to ask questions about his planning testimony. That's not a.
I thought he's been talking about the fence.
No.
Yeah.
You've been asking him about the fence, and I keep telling you.
Oh, only me, only me, not the other seven people.
Asked relevant questions to the man's testimony as a planner, what he testified to. And you can, I'll, I won't get in your way, I won't interrupt you, but you've gotta ask relevant questions to his testimony.
Okay, alright, as a planner, is it your testimony that you're declaring the three sides, the north, the south, and the east? Not frontages?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, I know we're getting somewhere. Is it your testimony that you're classifying? We know what the boardwalk is, it's an open public space, people walk on it. But is it your testimony on the north and the south side, outside the fence, that there's those concrete wide, I think they're about twelve or fourteen feet wide, that vehicles and people walk on, we're gonna classify as alleys, but not as they're defined in the redevelopment program, just as you said in your opinion?
That's a very compound question, Mr.
Well, I, I think it's been stated that there's been a lot by this expert, a lot of what he said.
Do you understand? Oh, well, let, let me ask him. Keenan, do you understand the question as presented?
No, I don't see how it's any different.
Ask the question again, but don't, don't make it a compound question, and just ask the man the question. If you have to ask three questions, ask them.
Okay. You, you testified that there's no definition of alley in the redevelopment program, correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay, now we're getting somewhere. But you testified when asked, or I'm asking, what do you call that space that is neck on the outside of the fence on the north and south side, and you said in your opinion, it's an alley?
Mr. Minoli, you've asked all of these questions already to, to Mr. Hughes.
Oh, wait a minute, you know what? Just let him answer. All I wanna know is, does he say it's his opinion? Okay. Let him answer.
No, she's objected to your question. We haven't decided whether she's correct or not in her objection. And the answer is yes, you have asked this question, and you've been, and it's been answered more than once already. So you don't ask it again.
Okay, so I'm gonna accept the fact that in, he said it's in his opinion and his belief that it's an alley, okay. We can move on. But it's not in the redevelopment program.
Is there a good other question?
Yeah, hold on, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, this is not easy. Did, it's not any of your testimony that that the, the integrity of the fence, correct? In other words, the strength of it, that was the other person, correct?
I object, that's already been asked, answered, and deemed not relevant to this witness.
Okay, okay, so a- as the planner, relative to the, the three sides, the north, the, uh, south and the east, what is your purview relative to the fence as a planner?
What do you mean?
I, I mean, uh, in other words, he has some authority, you're telling me, he's got some authority as a planner relative to this fence? And what I'm asking you.
No, I didn't say that. I said he doesn't talk about the fence as a planner. You can ask.
Well, you told me.
Let me finish, you can ask him about the height of the fence, does it, does it meet the ordinance? Does it meet the plan? You can ask him planning questions about the fence, but as far as details about the fence, that's architectural stuff. And that's what was asked of the other witness who was before him. You can't just ask him general questions about a fence. They have to be related to the plan, requirements in the plan. The height, setbacks, you know, materials, is there anything in the plan? But you've already had the architect tell you. He, he testified that the plan contains sections that permit the fence to be constructed of the wood. So this isn't the witness for those kinda questions. This witness answers planning questions.
Okay, well then I have a final question. As a planner, in your purview, relative to the redevelopment program. Is, is it your, is it fact or your opinion or your belief that the north, south, and east side comply?
Yes, that's my opinion.
Okay, fine, it's your opinion. Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Hey, um, we have, uh, three other people, um, let's go with, uh, Kathleen Muma.
Thanks, Barbara. This is Kathleen Muma, eleven oh four Sunset. Um, I just have a question about the north facing elevation. Um, Mr. Hughes, you said the north side, the north elevation is facing um, an easement or a pedestrian walkway or alley we're calling it. I just wondered, is that alley that it is facing? Is that alleyway currently present today, like as a cement sidewalk? Or is that alleyway going to be installed as a part of this development?
That's really a question for the engineer.
Okay, it is shown on the plans and will, and will exist after full construction. I think as to whether it exists today was a question that the engineer addressed some time ago.
Thank you.
Uh, are, is that all, Ms. Muma? Okay, um, we have, uh, the city historian, please.
Yes, greetings. Have to unmute myself. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, Warner Baumgartner, four oh two Fifth Avenue, City Historian. Greetings, folks.
Thank you.
I was instructed earlier to reserve my questions for this witness, so I'll just go with the same questions again. Uh, regarding page, uh, sixty-three, Building Facades, Section Three. I had read that previously, I'll read it again, um, and then, uh, find out if we have an answer. Says the frontages of new buildings shall be harmonious with the blockface on both sides of its street. Existing buildings will provide the design context unless they are non-conforming or non-contributing. Applicants are expected to provide drawn and or photo documentation of the blockfaces with the frontage proposed, drawn within its urban context. So my question is, do we have that? Applicants are expected to provide evidence that, uh, this paragraph three is complied with.
Yes, in my opinion, we've satisfied this guideline. Um, this is not the first time you've raised this issue. As you know, we've been to the DRC, we've been to council, we've been to planning board. We're over seventy exhibits into this application. We've provided a number of not just elevations, but rendered views of the building. We've also provided in plan view, an orientation map which shows, um, images of some of the surrounding buildings. This is also unique in that it's a pavilion building that is not, it's not a typical infill urban redevelopment project where you have adjacent buildings and you're trying to determine if they're compatible. Here, the only reference point would be across the street with the North Beach Building, which is a building that was, that was designed in the Mediterranean Revival style. Um, as you heard testimony this evening, uh, we're proposing a one-story structure in a style that meets the guidelines in the plan. Um, and it's located across the street from an eight-story building that was designed also in a style encouraged by the plan. So if there's any concerns about compatibility, or we need additional views to understand the context for this building, that's not something that we've certainly heard from the board in recent meetings. Um, and as a planner, it's my belief that we've satisfied this guideline, and um, I don't know what else would be needed in terms of understanding the context here. My sense is everyone's very familiar with the context of this property.
So you have no evidence to show? That's your answer? Says applicants are expected to.
Counsel, you take care of this, go ahead.
That was not his answer. Mr. Hughes just pointed to many things that we have presented in the record and evidence hasn't been provided, as well as adding his own testify testimonial evidence. So is, the answer was not that there's no evidence, it was the contrary.
Despite of the fact that none of that evidence meets this standard in section three.
That is your opinion, that was not Mr. Hughes's opinion, so I object to the test.
Move to the next item then. Uh, we're gonna beat this elevations and frontages things to death unfortunately. Um, so you're classifying this a building, or is this a structure?
What's this?
Hmm? The, the proposed construction, is it a building or is that, or is it a structure?
Which part?
The whole thing. Is, is what you're proposing a building, or is it a structure?
Well, it's a use. I mean, it's a, it's a pool club facility that consists of a building. Uh, which has roof.
What part of it is the building?
And then other portions of the facility are open air, outdoor amenity spaces. And much of the perimeter of the use is, is bounded by a proposed wood fence.
Okay, so you, you believe this to be a building? How many sides does a building typically have?
That's.
It's, yeah.
Mr. and Mr., I mean, Warren.
Yeah.
Warner, what, where, where are we going?
We're going with.
Where are we going? Ask the question, ask the real question.
Does this building have four sides?
The building itself has, I'd have to pull up the plans, it probably has more than four sides. Um, but as I've testified repeatedly this evening, if your question is does the building have one of its sides along the boardwalk, it does not. The fence is located along the boardwalk.
Is there an elevation on the east side?
Uh, there is a portion of the building, um, in elevation which is oriented to the east and is set back from the Easterly property line.
Is there an elevation on the north?
Yes.
Is there an elevation on the south?
Yes.
Does the elevation on the east side face a public space?
Uh, the, my testimony is that.
Let him answer, don't ta- don't interrupt him.
That portion of the building is an interior facade to the overall facility, which is further screened by the proposed fence. It's not located on the, on the property line. It's really an interior wall which is part of the overall facility.
I didn't ask that. You already testified that the east has an elevation, correct?
Uh, what I, I think my answer was, Warner, are you gonna let me answer the question?
I'm gonna let you say the same thing you said before.
Okay, well, or we could just.
You don't let him do anything. No, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
You don't let him do anything. He answers your question. We decide what is right and what is wrong, or what's relevant and irrelevant, not you. Go ahead.
Was your testimony that the east side has an elevation?
My testimony was that.
No, he didn't finish his answer. You keep that, you just did the same thing I told you not to do.
Jack, at this point, that's all I need to know.
Answer the question, if, if you, the city historian interrupts, mute him until the witness is finished answering the question. Go ahead, Keenan, answer the question.
So the answer is the east elevation of this facility is the fence along the boardwalk. The wall, which is interior to the overall use, is set back from the property line, screened by the fence and is not considered a building elevation. is set back from the property line, screened by the fence, and is not considered a building elevation that will constitute a frontage.
Okay, please unmute.
Does the north side have an elevation?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Warner, that was already asked and answered.
Okay, thank you. Does the north side face a public open space?
Again, isn't that the same question? Mr. Hughes has-
Yes or no?
Mr. Hughes has already repeatedly testified about the existence of the alleyways on either side of the building, on the north and the south. It's been asked by you, by others. The answer isn't going to change if more people keep asking the same question. The answer-
Let's address the alley then. Let's address the alleyway. Is it anticipated that this alleyway will have vehicular access?
You're asking, Mr. Hughes, how the city is going to choose to use the pedestrian easements for its benefit.
So it's a pedestrian easement then? Not an alley?
The pedestrian easement forms an alley, but the terms of it are to be used by the city in accordance with whatever legal way they can use it. And it's not Mr. Hughes who's going to determine how that piece of alley gets used by the city and by pedestrians or by anyone else.
Okay. I'll call your attention to page 39 of the redevelopment plan.
Okay.
Alley. Alley is defined, "A narrow vehicular accessway to the rear of urban lot providing service areas, parking access, and utility easements." These, as they are used by trucks and must accommodate dumpsters, should be paved from buildings facing the building, drainage. It's an awkward paragraph, but I will direct everyone's attention to page 39, which defines alley as a service corridor used by vehicles. Is that correct? So you still insist that this is an alley, not a public sidewalk?
I think within the intent of the plan, it still remains an alley. I have no idea if it's going to be accessible by vehicles. It's a public accessway that's really intended to provide access between Ocean Avenue and the boardwalk.
You know if there will be a hardened section of boardwalk directly in line with these public easements to be used by vehicles?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. On the other side of these public easements, to the north in particular, what property is located there?
We've already gone through this, Mr. Warner?
We have?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
This has already been asked and answered numerous times.
And what was the answer?
It only happened probably about half an hour ago, so-
Terrific.
I'm sure you were on.
Let's look at the south side then. What is on the other side of the public access easement to the south side?
That was also asked and answered.
Okay, if you think so, that's great. Wonderful. Now, let's address, let me just click through here. Let's click on page 61, which has been referenced about fences. There's a definition here for frontage fences. They are to be made of metal or wood pickets. Now, your explanation for not using wood pickets is that the east side is not a frontage. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. In spite of the fact that you've already testified that the east side faces a public space?
Not in spite of the fact.
Okay.
I think Mr. Hughes has given his testimony that they're basing out onto those public easement alleyways. Again, I just have to object to the line of questioning. There's, this is not about whether Mr. Hughes agrees with Mr. Baumgartner. The testimony is the testimony.
What I find difficult is that the answers circumvent the question. They dance around the question most times.
That's your opinion. That's your opinion. However, the witness, when you cross-examine people, you don't always get the answers you expect.
Absolutely. I understand that. Let's go to page 91. 91, under Scenic Resources and Design. This is a CAFRA regulation.
Mr. Hughes has not testified as to any of the CAFRA regulations this evening.
He's testifying as the planner. This is a planning requirement. Scenic Resources and Design. This is a planning requirement. I'm curious if this project meets this standard of providing-
Because I will stop you there because the NJDEP has already reviewed this entire project and determined that it complies with all of the DEP's relevant requirements.
Okay. Thank you. Let me see if there's anything else here. Just clicking through my notes here. We did alley, we did okay, building frontages. Okay, I guess we're done. Thank you.
Hey, next person up, I see Maureen Nevin. If you could unmute, please. AP TV? Or is that, Maureen would have to unmute herself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
No? Yes?
Yes.
No, don't mute.
No. We did hear you now. We don't hear you. We need to unmute yourself.
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you now.
Unmute.
We can hear you, Ms. Nevin.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I think her speakers may be off.
Should we? We can hear you, Maureen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
We come back. Do we have a cell phone number that we can call?
Yes, if you could, if you could-
Again, star nine, I'll try this time.
No, you do, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Did that work? Hello?
Hello?
No, I don't want to be muted.
Are you able to ask Ms. Nevin a question?
Hello? Hello, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes. Ms. Nevin?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
All right, this is Maureen Nevin. Did you just say yes? Is that you saying yes? Okay, okay. So this is my question.
Maureen, give us your answer.
And if it's been answered, I apologize in advance. But it's my burning question here.
Just a minute.
This is my one chance. Yeah. How can the pool plan be consistent with the WRP plan when that plan called for oceanfront buildings to be open to the public and the pool is restricted to private paying members?
That's actually not within the scope of Mr. Hughes's testimony this evening and is something that has been testified to previously.
Ms. Nevin, did you hear the answer?
No, I couldn't because she was muted this time on my end.
Okay, okay. Ms. Smith, would you like to reply to Ms. Nevin?
Sure. I indicated that that was outside of the scope of Mr. Hughes's testimony and had been testified to previously, to some extent.
Right. He did not testify to this today, so that was testified probably a few months ago.
And who was the, who gave the testimony on that? Do you recall?
There's been prior testimony from Mr. Hughes on that. There's been prior testimony from, I think each of the witnesses probably touched upon the use at some point. But this evening, we did not go into great detail about that.
So it's not, you can't ask questions about that then?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have one more person. Mike? I'm sorry, I don't want to butcher your name any further.
Yeah, hello.
Hello?
Yes, hi, this is Mike Sazork. Don't worry about it, I get it all the time. 305 Eighth Avenue. I had a question about the the frontage. I think the testimony was that it was determined that the frontage was the the west side on Ocean Avenue. Is that correct? There was testimony about that?
Yes.
And I just saw on the plans that there is beach access, beach access door on the south, the south side of the building. I was wondering if that is, it says access, is that entrance and exit? Can people freely come in and go out of that door?
I believe that Mr. Handel testified to that previously back in May of 2019 about how the access would work from the side doors.
Okay, and that was, and I assume that factored into the determination of the frontage of the building? I don't know what the answer is because I don't remember. I was probably in that meeting, but I I have no idea what the answer was, but I assume that was factored into the determination of the frontage of the building?
Yes.
Okay. Given, I don't recall what the answer was, that if people could go in and come out of that door regardless. I mean, as someone mentioned earlier that, you know, most of the businesses, anyone knows, if you're walking along Ocean Ave, I mean, the main business of all of the businesses on the boardwalk is on the boardwalk side, not on Ocean Ave. And so, you know, given that there's beach access entrance on the, on the the south side, plus there's a second story, you know, roof deck, party deck, whatever you want to call it, on the south side, the east side, and the north side.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you, what is the question?
No, well, I'm trying to figure out, you know, given that, you know, one would think that the frontage on all the other businesses on the boardwalk is really on the boardwalk side, not on the street side, given there's no parking lot on the street side for the individual businesses. There's no parking lot for the beach club either. Given that there's an entrance and possibly an exit, possibly an entrance on the south side, and that there's second-story frontage on the south side, the east side, and the north side, I would think that the least busy side of this club is going to be the Ocean Ave side.
You're making, you're giving us an opinion. What's the question?
Yeah, that's my opinion. You know, why-
This isn't the time for opinions. This is the time for questions.
Okay, so why was the frontage deemed to be on the Ocean Ave side, given that there's an entrance and an exit for beach access that was, is going to be very desirable for people in the club?
He's already answered that more than once this evening from a planning perspective. That's been asked and answered numerous times.
And what about, I didn't hear anyone address, what what about the second-story roof deck? Does that factor into frontage at all?
It has nothing to do with tonight's testimony.
Does it have anything to do with frontage? I mean, if it does-
No, all of the amenities and the structure and the location of what's there has been testified to at previous meetings in great detail.
I'm just specifically asking about the frontage, though. Wouldn't the second story factor into the frontage determination? That's a question.
You can ask that question.
Does the second story factor into the determination of the frontage?
Not really in this case.
Why would you say not really? It's not, you know?
That's his answer.
That's not a, I would assume it's a yes or a no answer. It either does or it doesn't.
Okay, so Keenan, give us a yes or a no answer.
Was the reason that it wouldn't factor into determination?
Yeah, the frontage is located on Ocean Avenue, and that's the main entrance to the building. That's where you have all the fenestration into public street. That's obviously been the facade in which the most emphasis has been placed from a design perspective. And that's the frontage of the building.
Okay, I mean, I guess you guys can make that determination. I mean, you know, just given the second, you know, if I'm remembering correctly, on the on the Ocean Ave side, the second story, you don't see anything from that side. No one would see any, you know, people or entrances or exits. But on the other three sides, you're gonna see people, you know, all up on the roof deck. There's a beach access. You know, I'm just-
It's a one-story building. It's a one-story building. There's some activities occurring on the decks on the upper stories. There will be some visibility of the upper portions of the structure. I've testified to that. But those aspects are not really relevant to this question about what constitutes the frontage of the building.
Okay, I mean, I guess we can agree to disagree. My opinion, and I think everyone knows, is that the frontage is not on Ocean Ave for any business that's located-
You're gonna get a chance to testify later.
Okay. That's all I had right now. Thanks.
All right, at this point, there are no other people that have their hands raised. So we can move forward. At this point, we're sitting at 10:03, at the end of the, at the end of public questions. So just so that we're clear as to what the next step is, the next step is public comment?
No, didn't we have an engineer?
Oh, no, that's-
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That was, that request was removed. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
You're right. You're right. That request was removed. So we don't, no longer need, there are no more, no further requests of people having, requesting testimony from any of the professionals. We're, at this point, that's concluded. We're now at the point where the next meeting will call, start calling the public for comments, three minutes apiece, one time around. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a, we'd like to bring back this application for December 14th without further notice.
Madam Chair, before you do that, I just want to clarify. The intent is to have the public to their comments and that, assuming there's time, Mr. Lieberman and I will each then give a closing statement.
Yes. Yes, I mean, you're absolutely right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I just want to clarify. So after we give our statements, then the intention is the board will vote, correct?
Well, here's, let's lay it out. And Jack, keep me honest.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're gonna go for public comments, like I mentioned, three minutes, one time around. After that, the attorneys can all have closing arguments. And we discussed that in the past, 15, 20 minutes, something in that area. If you even need that much. So that's what we're gonna put out there. And then the planning board will be able to deliberate as to what their thoughts are, what their dreams are, what whatever they like for, to help us come to some sort of conclusion to this application.
This is Rick. I have a question. So when we get to deliberation, we will have an opportunity to kind of lay out what our comments are and why, like why I'm voting the way I'm voting?
Absolutely, yes.
I don't want to just vote. I want to be able to say-
No, no, no. You have to give me findings of fact and you have to tell me why you're voting and yeah, you just can't listen to two years' worth of testimony and say, okay. okay.
Yes or no, right?
Okay, good, good, good.
No, 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 no.
Because I think it's important for-
Absolutely.
Good, all right.
Okay. All right, so is that, that clear for everyone?
The only thing, I, I have a couple of procedural things that I'd like to discuss. Okay, number one, um, we were remiss in not asking all the witnesses if they were represented by counsel or not. I'm going to ask the people, when they make their public comments, that they'll identify if they're a member of the group and they're, and, or not. That's what we should have been doing all the way down the line. Um, and then they're free to do whatever. We're, we're gonna consistently go with, we allow the public, even though they're represented by counsel, uh, to make additional comments, ask additional questions, we're not gonna cut that off at this point, but I would like to know, for the record, if they're a member of the group that's represented by counsel. Um, secondly, when we do the, um, closing statements, it would be Mr. Lieberman first and Ms. Phillips second. Similar to a trial, and it's pretty, what, no different. Um, and that'll do it. That's all I have, and then, of course, the board will, in fact, deliberate and decide the case.
Now, that, just, just to be clear, that may or may not happen at the next meeting, but we're just laying out what the process is, as we see it, going forward, so, um, we hope it will be-
Hey, John Moore here.
Sorry, go ahead, John.
Yeah, just, uh, one small thing, uh, I believe Mr. Handel said, like, he'd get us some information as far as the CAFRA permit, where everything built on the east, on the west side of the boardwalk facing the east, has to be breakaway material, as per the CAFRA?
The, the CAFRA permit has been, the, the letter from the DEP concerning CAFRA was submitted to the board and is, uh, an exhibit and is in, in the record, mayor.
But he, your witness-
The answer he gave.
He indicated that he would get us-
Yeah.
Okay, I, just, just so I can clarify the exact request.
He indicated that he would look into whether or not it was a requirement to have a breakaway fence, or it could be a more sturdy wall.
You can play the tape.
Yes.
We're, we're, we're with it.
So, is that something you would like submitted as a document?
Yeah, send us something, whatever it is.
What, what, how, however you want to do it the right way, but I just don't want to get lost by the wayside because we were told we were gonna get it. So, I just don't want to, like, come, come December, throw a monkey wrench and say, what happened to that? So, I'm just asking, we don't forget that, and we get it.
Understood.
Yeah, and a copy to, uh, Mr. Lieberman as well, please. Okay, do either council have any questions or concerns about how we're gonna proceed?
I understand entirely, thank you for clarifying.
Okay. All right, um, can I get a, a motion to, um, to continue this, uh, this application to December fourteenth, which, and with no further notice?
As long as Ms. Smith will consent to the time within which we have to, uh, decide the case till that date.
I will consent to December fourteenth, and I would ask that the slide that was up previously that had the Zoom information for the fourteenth be put back on the screen and read into the record as part of this motion, so that the public has read the numbers and the passcodes for the next meeting.
You want us to read it?
Uh, yes, for those that are-
Yeah, because we have people by phone, okay. Uh, want me to do it?
Go for it.
Okay. Next beach club planning board hearing, virtual meeting information, Asbury Park Planning Board, virtual meeting, twelve fourteen twenty, notice links. When, colon, December fourteenth, twenty twenty, at oh seven hundred PM, uh, I confused both times, but it's, uh, seven PM. Topic, Asbury Park, uh, Planning Board, virtual meeting, twelve fourteen twenty. Join Zoom meeting, per n, by computer or other web-enabled device, close per n. Uh, here's the address, HTTPS, colon, backslash, backslash, zoom dot U S, backslash, I, I believe that is, backslash, nine three seven two four three six two six seven seven, question mark, P W D, uh, equal sign, uppercase V, I believe that's a zero, lowercase T, uppercase C, uppercase U, uppercase D, uppercase V, uppercase I, uppercase W, uppercase E, nine, uppercase M, uppercase S, uppercase D, uppercase A, lowercase Z, N, I don't, I assume that, is that an I or a J, or a lowercase J?
J.
J, okay. J, uppercase Z, uppercase P, lowercase A, uppercase T, uppercase J, lowercase P, lowercase B, lowercase K, uppercase Z, uppercase K, uppercase Q, uppercase T, zero, and that, the last digit is blocked off on my screen.
Nine.
Nine. Meeting ID, nine three seven, space, two four three six, space, two seven six seven. Password, zero six one seven zero zero, one tap mobile or mobile. Uh, plus sign, one nine two nine, two zero five, six zero nine, nine, comma, comma, nine three seven two four three, six two seven, excuse me, six two seven six seven, uh, numeral sign, lowercase O, lowercase R, plus sign, one three one, two six two, six six seven, nine nine, comma, comma, nine three seven, two four three, six two seven six seven, numeral sign, per n, uppercase N for new, uppercase Y for your, close per n, dial by phone by your location, colon, plus, one, space, nine two nine, space, two zero five, space, zero nine nine, space, uppercase U and S, per n, uppercase N for new, uppercase Y for your, close per n. Next line, plus sign, one, space, three zero one, space, seven one five, space, eight five nine two, space, uppercase U and S, uh, per n, uppercase G, E, lowercase E R, M A N, T O W N, Germantown, close per n. Enter meeting ID number, nine three seven, two four three six, two seven six seven, numeral sign.
And that link will be available on the Asbury Park website, correct?
Yes.
That was great, Jack.
Thanks. At this time of night and at my age, that was tough.
Bravo. This is Mike Manzella, so moved.
Okay, so who moved it? Most, Michael?
Yeah.
Second.
And second was?
Alexis.
Okay, thank you, Alexis. John Moore? John Moore? Yes, no? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
You, Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Thank you, since I'm thanking everybody, I'll thank everyone individually.
Thank you.
Uh, Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
You?
You're welcome.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes, and you're welcome.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Yes, and you're welcome.
And thank you again. Rick Lambert?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And Barbara Krzak?
Yes, thank you very much, Jack.
Matter, matter is carried without further notice with the consent of the applicant for the time within which we have to act to December fourteenth at seven PM.
May I get a, a motion to adjourn?
Alexis, motion to adjourn.
Yvonne, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.